All the meeting to order. Would like to welcome everyone that's here. I appreciate you showing up and engaging. At this time, I'm going to move on to item one B, the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Adam Chair, I'd like to ask that we add public comments to the committee of the whole meeting this afternoon.
Well, right now, we are adopting the agenda, but duly noted.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda with the exception of seven A, seven B be moved to other business vice policy.
So you would like to move item seven B from seven B to eight C?
Yes.
I accept that. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Calhoun.
Well, I'd like to move that we have public comments added to our agenda.
Can we have a pending motion on the floor? Right. Okay, the motion, the motion carries regarding the amendment to adopting the agenda policy. Under policy seven B will now be eight C. Okay, we'll move forward and I will acknowledge Dr. Temple. We have already not only taken up this matter, but we have also voted on it. So we will continue with the meeting as scheduled. So item two A is the Cognia training. Oh, yes. Prior to starting Cognia training, I would like to introduce our new parliamentarian, Ms. Liz Guthridge. She's going to offer her parliamentarian services to the board. Ms. Guthridge is a professional registered parliamentarian certified by the National Association of Parliamentarians, who resides locally here in Charleston. She is classically trained with a practical orientation, who strives to help individuals and organizations on a parliamentarian parliamentary procedure and related challenges. In addition to her work as a parliamentarian, Ms. Guthridge is a senior leadership and organizational coach with extensive experience and demonstrated success. Specifically, she has successfully worked for, worked with boards of directors and executive teams to improve their performance, coached leaders one-on-one for continuous improvement, and built constituent commitment. Ms. Guthridge provides services for a range of nonprofit organizations and for-profit companies around the United States. She also has served on boards and acted as a presiding officer. We welcome Ms. Guthridge. We also want to acknowledge that Ms. Huggins has opted like Dr. Gallion to sit alongside senior staff on the floor. And with that, we will move on to Cognia. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for having us here. Very glad to be in South Carolina this afternoon, not only for the good food, but to have a chance to talk with you all as boards and a community member. I'm Andre Harrison. I'm Vice President of Accreditation Services for Cognia. I have my colleagues with me, Vice President for the Mid-Atlantic Jerry Cooper from Kentucky, and my colleague Annette Melton, which most of you all probably know from South Carolina. She's Senior Director. And my home is Alabama. So again, we want to let you know that on behalf of Cognia, how much we appreciate you all having us here. Because I want to tell you, I've done a lot of training for accreditation. But I was in Georgia when a board member said to me, "Dr. Harrison, you've worked so much with teachers and principals to get them ready for the engagement review. Why aren't you all talking to boards?" And so again, it's so important that we do that. And we're here from a supportive standpoint, and we hope that when this training is over, Board Member Robinson, that you can take this and use it for your next steps in planning for continuous improvement. There are three letters that I want you to just write down for me. SSO. You can do it in your head and you can write it down. SSO. Successful student outcomes. That's what I will be talking about today in your work as a board and our expectations from Cognia. So we have a presentation. You all, I tell you, Mr. Calhoun, it's going to be so hard for me to stand still because I normally walk around when I present, but they told me I got to stay still and talk in this microphone, okay? So I'm going to behave and do that. So let's see if this clicker works here. They also said to point toward the computer. Okay, let's see if I got it on first of all. Yes, thank you. No, it's okay.
And I just have to know, are you Auburn or Roll Tide?
Well.
Sorry, we need a little humor.
Exactly, yes. Well, I'm going to tell you what. I'm an Assistant Professor of Educational Leadership for the University of Alabama. But I went to Auburn. It gets even messier.
So the truth is coming out.
Yes. So I root for the Tide, except for one game a year. And that's the Iron Bowl. So definitely. But Alabama does help pay the bills to keep the wife happy, so. So, good question, good question. And I will tell you what, when I did come to South Carolina, I was very strategic in the colors that I used. Because again, everybody looks at all of that stuff. So, but it's all in fun. We have a good time watching sports and what have you. So thank you, Ms. Watley, for helping me break the ice here this afternoon, because I love to break the ice. All right, so did y'all get me working? Okay, so let's go back to full screen and we'll try this again. Okay, very good. I wanted to go back and talk about our legacy, Ms. Bailey, because I want people to know sometimes back in the day, now it's going a little too fast. I hadn't, okay. All right, very good. Back in the day, a lot of us from the Southeast. Very good. See, I have a mirror in my face back there. From the Southeast, if you say Saks, a lot of people are going to know about accreditation that way, right, Dr. Temple? If you say Saks. But what I wanted to do was to tell you about our legacy of accreditation. We've been around a long time. So at one time, we were the Association of Politicians School, which we know as Saks. And then in about 2006, 2007, we merged with two other accrediting agencies, North Central, Northwest, and became Advanced Air. And then in about 2018, we merged with Major Progress and became Advanced Air Major Progress. And around 2019, and I'm being very clear because I've got an attorney here, I'm saying around, just to make sure. Around 2019, we became Cognia. And so we're now Cognia. Cognia is what we call the parent organization for those three accrediting agencies that I mentioned. The Northwest, which is Pacific area, North Central, Michigan, and other states, and then Cognia, I mean Saks. Whenever I train boards, I like to bring you back to your mission, because I looked at your mission, and I looked at what you were looking at for students. I want you to take a moment and just look at the mission and vision there for Cognia. Take a moment, look at just the vision. And I was a teacher first, so I'll be calling on folks to help me out here, okay? So just look at that vision. And I want you to just tell me a word that jumps out at you to impact and inspire educational providers, that you all, to advance and enable pathways for success for all learners. Pathways for success for all learners. Mr. Kelly, when you look at that vision statement, I know there was at least one word that jumped out at you.
Certainly, the word pathways, because it implies there's more than one.
Exactly. Wow. Excellent. Very good. Never had it explained that way to me, but yes. All right. Let's see here. Ms. Watley?
I like advanced because it talks to preparation.
Exactly, exactly. Very good. So I'll go ahead and pull out one other one, but I see Ms. Roberson. That made it look like she just wanted to say something.
It's Roberson.
Roberson, I'm sorry, yes.
I'll choose the word inspire.
Inspire, and thank you. I'll make sure I get it right, Ms. Roberson, okay? I apologize. Inspire for sure. Successful pathways, inspire, very good. Impact, success for all learners. And I want to explain something to you, board members. When we say all learners, a lot of time when we look at all learners, we think about boys and girls, right? But let's think about after COVID, something really changed my thinking about successful student outcomes. I really had to start thinking about my learners who were working with students, teachers. That's when we saw the gap, basically, where teachers were like, "I've got to teach my students from looking at a black square on a screen that I cannot even see them. I don't know how to do that. I need support." So the key thing we're seeing with this vision now, we're really helping educators and leaders see that you've got to support all learners, not just the boys and the girls, Ms. Roberson, but teachers too. So from a board standpoint, think about the decisions you're making to support curriculum and instruction, that your teachers will need that support too. Did you, I'll get professorial with you, Ms. Watley. You know, the word that we think about, we hear pedagogy a lot dealing with students, but andragogy is the word we think about with the study of adult learning. And again, that's what got me after COVID, because adults need support also. Wouldn't you all agree with me? Yes, you never stop learning. And then I'm going to move on because of time. When you think about our mission, I always tell boards, "Look at us as the trusted partner to support you and guide you." That's the reason why before each of you came in, my card is here. I have my colleagues here. If you have questions or what have you, we're here. A trusted partner is somebody that if I don't know how to swim, we're Board Member McKenney. I jump in the deep end, you don't lend me a hand, okay? To pull me out. So we're your trusted partner in advancing learning. Anytime we do training, and you'll get a copy later on, our performance standards really got our work. So anytime we do training, we tie it back to a standard. And so today, we're looking at standard eight tied to the governing authority, and that's you all. You will see later on that our standard really ties back into role clarity. And so it's going to be talking about leaders, professional staff, learners, and what have you. So you'll see standard eight there. The governing authority demonstrates a commitment to learners by collaborating with leaders to uphold the institution's priorities and to drive continuous improvement. As a former superintendent in Alabama, this is so powerful for my board and me to make sure we come together with those priorities. As a soup or superintendent, I wanted to hear your voice. I needed your input from a board standpoint, because that's so important. And I wanted your voice also as external stakeholders and parents, because again, it's so important that there's buy-in and that everybody's involved with it. So again, that's what Cognia will be looking at. We've been around a long time. We've been around over 125 years, over 36,000 institutions, and 90-plus countries doing this work. I had an opportunity just recently to go to Germany to be on an accreditation engagement review, and we'll be going back to Italy and Spain later on. The biggest part was the ride over the ocean. You know, I'm from Alabama, I'm a country boy. I can fly in-state, but when they tell me, "Dr. Harrison, it's going to be about 10 hours." What am I going to do for that long? So we watch a lot of movies, but I made it. I made it. Board members sometimes ask the question, "What do you do besides accreditation?" Because what I don't want you to see us as just, and I'll say it, because some board members have asked me this question. You know, are you all, the accreditation got you team? No, it's not our job. Our job is to support you during the continuous improvement journey and guide you and give you advice, you know, through your superintendent or what have you. But we know schools because we're in schools. So we do more than accreditation. We do certification. I just learned from Robin, she was telling me that you have a STEM certified school. So that's a good thing. So certification, assessment, school improvement solution, and professional learning, what I'm doing here today. So a lot of times, you know, people may call us if they're looking for enhancement in classroom engagement, and we may use our Elliot to the Effective Learning Environment Observation Tool to help guide your work towards student engagement. Teacher first. There are learning charters for today. Let's just take them on, you can look at those. So we're going to look at the board's role in Cognia's accreditation tied to the performance standards. We're going to, we're going to make sure you see this as a contingent improvement process. Standards that tie back to governance and leadership. We're going to talk about the engagement review from a board's standpoint. And then we're to take a few minutes and talk about our resources and tools that schools have access to by being a member of Cognia. Again, these are things that I wrote this presentation. We've been doing this presentation since about 2017. So we really tailored this for board members. And you know, as we go through, if you have a question, or if you want to wait until the end to ask your question, that's fine. Or if you want to end up emailing me, either way, I will try and answer your question. But I always like to stop. And I did my homework. And I think I got this right. I think, Ms. Bailey, you've been on the board the longest, or Ms. Mary Waters. Waters has been on the board the longest, but she's not here, so I've got to ask a question. I want you to think about this. If you were on an elevator and somebody said, "Okay, you are a board member of Charleston County, which is a big county." You all, I forgot about that. I came up State Road 17, I think it's 17. Wow. Massive. But if you were on an elevator and somebody asks you this question, "What are you most proud of as a trustee?" As a trustee, because same name, board member trustee, but you go by trustee. What are you most proud of? I want you to take a moment and just think about that, because I'm going to call on some of you all. What are you most proud of? What are you most proud of as a board member? No matter the time that you've served, I know there's something that has impacted you as a board member that you're proud of, or your system. Take a moment and think about that. What are you most proud of? Ms. McGinnity, what are you most proud of? That's the board, that's the board chair woman.
Well, I'll be honest, proud is not a word I like to use. But perhaps if I may change it to what are you most excited about?
That's fine, what are you most excited about?
Is the opportunity to support teachers to teach our children.
Very good, very good, very good. Bailey, thank you, Mr. McKenney.
Well, I'm excited that this board has so much diversity, so many people from different backgrounds and ways of life, that we all can come together and come to solutions to help not just one set of children in the community, but all the children and all the teachers and staff in the community.
Very good, very good. Solution is a powerful word. Mr. Grabowski, did I get it right?
You're almost finished. Close enough.
What are you most proud of? Are excited about?
I think listening to the teachers and having, knowing that I don't have two kids and, but I do have a grandson that will be going to school. But just listening to the teachers and knowing what a great job they're doing with our students and the support that they're getting or asking for.
Very good, one, very good. I'll take one more. Mr. Kelly, thank you.
Well, Keith kind of stole mine. I actually most proud of the administrators. I've seen such, how complex this district is. And I think the term might be a grand appreciation for how complex and massive the district is. And I'm proud of the folks I've gotten to meet that do this difficult work.
Very good, very good.
Now I want to go.
No, I'm just decided as a teacher, I'm going to let every board member tell me, tell us. Very good, thank you. I'm making mental notes too. Go ahead.
I'm just going to kind of dovetail kind of what Ms. McKenney, Mr. Grabowski, and Mr. Kelly, and even what Ms. Bailey have shared, and take it even a step further. I really have a deep appreciation for being able to be in a position where I can listen to the community, the teachers, and the staff. And then I like, personally, I like networking and I like connecting people. And there was recently a situation where I was able to intercept some of the community discussion about a proposal that was going to merge three schools. And I immediately reached out to the district staff. We all came together and are taking that forward. And I believe the community is beginning to feel a sense of empowerment at being heard and that the district will, you know, work with them on this particular matter.
Very good. Lots of key words there. All right, thank you. Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, I will say I'm most proud of the gains we've made in student achievement. And also going into, I guess, I'm going to jump ahead to your next question, how we, how basically we have the most positive impact on other students in our institution, the increased funding into each classroom, and particularly through the professional development for our teachers and putting more money into their pockets, but then also inside of their learning, so it can keep moving forward, so we can keep having those achievements going.
Very good. You know, you all, I normally do this training three hours, a whole day. I wish I had just a big post-it sheet of paper, because you all have said some amazing things that I would just really like to make notes of, where you will have it. Very good. Ms. Roberson? Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
I'm most proud of the advocacy work that we get to do as a board member, especially with the new single-member districts. We are able to be the voice for our individual constituencies. So for me, it's advocacy.
Very good. I heard Dr. Temple.
Lots of things to be proud of, but in terms of the work that we've been able to do as a board, I'm very proud that we were able to give our teachers a big raise, a pay raise, because I think that recognizes the talents and the dedication and the respect that we have for them. And of course, the other thing that I just love doing is visiting the schools, because we can see incredible dedication on the part of the teachers, the principals, and then seeing the student work that is coming about because of good decisions that are being made for curriculum instruction. I'm just really proud to see that kind of work occurring.
Very good, very good. And I think I got everybody. Just want to make sure. But I want to say this to you, and thank you, Mr. Calhoun, for even going on to the next question, because again, it's, and you all answered part of that in your conversations. But I've got a slide that I'm going to go ahead and go to now before I respond, because we want to talk a little about your roles and responsibilities tied to continuous improvement. And again, you'll see your vision up there about excellence is our standard. Powerful, powerful, powerful. So let's look at some primary roles of boards of trustees. Look at some of the things you say. Vision, goals, implement policies to help the work of the institution, hire and evaluate the superintendent, to adopt the budget, to work with leaders in the community. And then, of course, to look at capital, outlay projects and expenditures and all that stuff. That's what you all do. I got another slide here from the standpoint of school boards in the Southeast that I've worked with. Take a moment and look at some of those things that are consistent for school boards, that are consistent. The only thing I want to tell you, and I don't think this is statute, in South Carolina, in Alabama, the board hires the chief school financial officer. The chief school financial officer is aligned to the board, but works in the day-to-day operation with the superintendent. What about facilities? How do facilities play a role in your work? How do facilities play a role in your work? Anybody want to take that answer? Facilities, how does it play a role in your work? Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Well, Dr. Harrison, I can tell you right now, I'm a little chilly and it's hard to focus on you because there's air conditioning blowing on me.
Yeah.
So, not calling you out, Jeff, but so, you know, the environment in which someone is in has a massive impact on their ability to focus on what's important.
Correct, correct. I heard you talk about resources and what have you. So yes, the board gets to also help make those decisions. But it's so important for the board and the superintendent to have a plan together for facilities and what have you. And what I have seen sometime, what I'm getting to, Ms. Watley, what I'm getting to is the fact that sometimes, as a former soup or intended, if a community saw dirt being, as we say in the South, if a community saw dirt being turned and one community, a building is going up, Ms. Calhoun, you're going to get a call. When's our turn to get a new gym? Yeah, yeah, when's our turn? What's going on over there in that community? If you have a capital outlay plan that you can communicate through and say, "Hey, have you seen our plan? Have you seen where we've been planning these things and coming together?" It's so important. So you see there, I talk about setting short terms and long-term planning goals. That's so important. The thing I saw, because where I was, I was in an elected position as a superintendent, as you all are. The thing I saw was always making sure that we had a way to communicate when questions came up. This is the slide that I wanted to get to. In your conversations, you talked about all of these things. Ms. Roberson, you talked about advocacy. There's nothing wrong with that, where you're working to be an advocate for your system and being that mouthpiece. I can remember as a superintendent, my board chair and I, we would go down during the legislative session in Alabama, we would go down and talk to our legislators that represented us as advocates for our boys and girls. Communication, I heard communication a lot. And y'all have heard the term that communication is a two-way street. It's so important that a board and superintendent, and as a former superintendent, I can tell you, my board chair and I set the agenda for the meeting. And we always talked through items and what have you and those type things, and what needed to be on the agenda. We were planning for the agenda, what came up through our attorney and everything. That was so important, just to have that communication and making sure that all board members were aware of what was going on. You know, as appropriate, because sometimes there were issues that we couldn't talk about until you had to act on. Teamwork, sound budget. I heard you all talk a lot about what you're most proud of. I heard teachers. I heard students. I heard leaders. I heard students. I heard leaders. All of those things. Very important. I would also tell you, think about your support staff as well. I do a training, in Alabama, I trained about 300-plus board members on how to sustain your highly effective staff members, something of that effect, where we would talk about sustaining and keeping your staff. And we talked about the importance of support people as well. Because sometime in our communication, we don't think about the impact they're having. Just think one day a bus driver's in drive. I was a bus driver at one time. Till I retired as superintendent, I still have my license. But just think of a day that they don't drive and the impact on the system. Or the cafeteria workers, CMP workers don't show up. So again, they are important as well. The last one I want to hit for you quickly. I want you, if you don't remember anything else, this is important. I want you as a board to think about being strategic thinkers and planners as a board. And I use strategic thinking first, because that's so important. And I'll tell you, give you a quick example. Ms. Watley tried to ask me about road title, War Eagle. I had to be a little strategic, because I know this is being recorded and some of my colleagues at the university.
You were very diplomatic.
That's right. So I had to think first. So even when you're planning, and I don't know when you've had your last board retreat, but it's so important to come together as a board in a retreat fashion, where you can really think through some of your next steps and your priorities and what have you. And like I say, I think Ms. Bailey may have said this, you know, sometime you have to agree to disagree to get to a solution, but that's okay. My two colleagues right here, a lot of times I like, I want to get my way and what have you, but they'll say, no, have you thought about this? This one is really good about now, Andre, have you thought about that? And I know when he says that, it's something I need to slow down and think about. So you don't have to be so quick on your decision. That's why we say strategic thinking. And then you move to strategic planning. And that's the cognia way, that we really have shifted to strategic thinking and planning. Of course, we talk about effective board of trustees. Now we have to talk about, a little bit about non or ineffective practices. Aimless talking. You know, I'm going to talk a few minutes about board norms. You know, if I'm sitting where you are, and when I was a superintendent and I was responsible to you all, I always wanted to come prepared. And because of, Mr. Calhoun, if you've got a question before you do this, I need to be able to answer your question, right? So that's one thing I wanted to make sure. So I didn't want to do aimless talking, poor conduct, you know? Here's the thing I want to tell you. Really after COVID, a lot of board meetings have been videoed. And I think about being raised by my grandmother and always thinking, you're on camera, you know? And it's so important sometime to remember those things that, plus, you're in a very, you're in a position where you are a role model to the community at large. So that's being unprepared. We don't want you to have to feel like you got to rubber stamp everything the superintendent say. I mean, I had board members that asked questions. And the needle that kept me on my toes. And I almost, I almost knew the question, Dr. Temple, you were going to ask. So I already knew how I needed to address that. That's okay. Micromanagement, you know, going into the schools, taking over the day-to-day operations, telling principals to move either way, I'm a board member, I'm in charge. Conflict of interest, this is one that in most areas, that most boards have approved a code of ethics for them, working through their legal counsel. Because when I was a superintendent, they changed the law in Alabama, where I could not make a recommendation to the board of a family member to be hired because of conflict of interest and things of that nature. And so again, think about those things, you know? There are times that you may have to abstain, you know, abstain from a vote, you know? Because you know that. Because I think everything that we do now is society. You could be challenged legally, you know? And so that's the reason why I'm very careful, trying to make sure I do the right thing at all times. Let's talk about board norms. This is very important. And when I say norms, I'm talking about expectations, standards, guidelines of where you want to, what you want to be as a board and how you want to facilitate a board meeting. And those are things that you all think through. That's not something that Cognia tells you. It's something that you want. I mean, I can support and guide, but that's for you. I'm going to show you some quick examples, and you have it on your screen. But what agenda is developed to ensure meetings are efficient? Some board members see that's norm. Board members come prepared. No side conversations. Board speaking in one voice. Very important. Respectful, courteous. These are some sample norms. The chairs roll, facilitate the meeting and monitor the discussion. I really want you all to think about that as you move forward as a board. What are some norms? What are some things we can agree upon as a board? Like Cognia has norms and guidelines for us. You know, I have a norm, whoever does this training has to go through training and then we have to approve them first. Anybody just, we're not gonna let anybody just come and do this training. So think about that. And again, it's so important to keep, when you're thinking of your norms, keeping your vision and mission at the forefront of your decision. What norms represent Charleston County School District Board? What norms? What do we want? And I think everybody agrees that it's important that we speak in one voice. As a board, that we come together, we work through matters of concerns. I can tell you, yes, again, in my role as superintendent, there were times where my chair and I disagreed. But when we came out together, we had resolved it. Because number one, I want you all to remember this, every one of you talk about students. Every one of you talked about students. And that's so important. And I'm so glad, from a standpoint of consistency in one voice, I heard students, I heard teachers, I heard administrators, and I know they appreciate that. I would tell you this, there's a quote I use sometime when I'm training aspiring superintendents. I tell them, people are grateful for that salary increase at the beginning of the year, but it is so important to maintain that relationship throughout the year. Bottom line, a salary increase don't make me happy in August, but consistency and making sure leadership is happening is gonna also make me happy come May.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not sure, did we establish if we were gonna hold it until the end for our questions?
Oh, no, you're fine right now.
Okay. My question is, we have established board norms when we first were elected. I believe somewhere in November, December, we established those norms. How often do you recommend we revisit those norms?
Excellent question. When you're looking, when you're looking at the dynamics of societal changes, changes in the districts or what have, within the district, then I recommend you revisit those norms, at least at the end of each year, I would. If something changes major within the year, then you can look at them. You can look at them anytime you want to, but I definitely think at least once a year that you go back and revisit those norms. That's so important. Very good question. Very good question.
And whose responsibility is it to bring that forward? Any board member?
Any board member can do that through your chair.
Thank you.
Very good. Good, good question. Very good question. Because again, if I have a concern over a norm, that's the norm's not working, then I can, I bring it to my chair. Good question. So now let's look at the foundation of our work. What we want boards to really know about their accreditation process and what drives their accreditation process? Are our accreditation performance standards? Where did Vanessa go? Go ahead, Vanessa, make sure everybody gets a copy of. This is a document that is an abbreviated, an abbreviated version of our standards. And our performance standards are the foundation of our work. So we have now 30 performance standards tied to all institutions tied except for early learning and extended learning. In the past, we had standards for digital learning schools. We had standards for systems. We had standards for individual institutions. But now we have standards for what we call our special purpose institutions and what have you. Now we have one set of standards. And those standards are really tied to guiding continuous improvement work. I want you to look here at this page where we talk about why new standards. The third bullet I think tells it all. Cognia accreditation can be your continuous improvement model. I want to say this to you, from the educators that talk to us, because Cognia revisits their standards every six years, we're looking at our standards. But I know that in South Carolina, you know, that's tied to our accreditation evaluation pretty much timeline. But I know in South Carolina, you all are five, you're correct. All right. But we do a six-year accreditation cycle. But every six years, we're visiting those standards. And if something major comes up, that could have, could be adjusted. But I know that every six years, we look at our standards. And again, those standards really go back and look at what's changed for continuous improvement. I would tell you, Ms. Roberson, a major factor that we saw with these standards, when we were revising these standards, COVID hit March 2020. Somebody says, well, why do you know it so well, March 2020? Because I was trapped in an airport, trying to get home from Phoenix. But in March 2020, when we were, we were working on these standards, COVID hit. And that had a major impact on, wouldn't you all agree that had somewhat of a major impact on education? And where the parents, are their parents in the room? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I got some A-men's back there. Very good. All right. So what we really had to do, we had to look at our standards and make sure that these standards were providing quality for institutions. And what we also wanted to do was that if a school already had a good continuous improvement process, that these standards complement that, and that is not something extra. And so that's what we see in this process, that this process really guides continuous improvement. And that's the purpose of these standards. Want to talk a lot about this slide, the focus of these standards, focusing on the learner. But remember, I said, everybody's a learner. Role clarity. You know, one activity that we do with the board, if you were to look at page one, and I'm going to hold it up, this page right here, you will see the standard one talks about leaders. Right here. So standard one denotes leaders. But if you look at standard eight, look to the next page, standard eight. It denotes, who, uh-uh. Standard eight talks about which group?
Learners.
Standard, standard eight. The governing, yeah, the governing authority, board of trustees, as you are. Very good. So you can see there, your homework assignment will be to just look at these standards and see the lead of identifier, like standard one leader, standard two leader, standard three leaders, until you get to standard five, professional staff. We're talking a lot about the learning environment also, where learning takes place. What you all were talking about, the classroom and what have you, and what happens in the classroom. You're going to see in a few minutes where I talk about the standards and their four key characteristics and how these standards are organized, the four key characteristics. And I know you all are going through an accreditation engagement review this year. But it is okay to ask questions of Ms. Huggins about where we're in the process, you know? Before, I always tell boards this, because this is your training. I know you and your lead evaluator, your accreditation, regional accreditation evaluator will think of a timeline of when everything should be submitted to Cognia. I'm going to say this, board members, if, and your self-assessment with just a document that will be submitted, submitted to Cognia, if the self-assessment is submitted and you're not aware of that, then you need to make sure that you are. That's the document that will be submitted. And you don't need to wait, and normally it's like four weeks before we finalize the review date. Mr. Kelly, if you want to ask the leaders of this district in November, where are we with the self-assessment for Cognia? You can do that as a board member, you know? You may want to organize with your chair and get it organized, but every board member can hear the same message. That's one thing that I did as a superintendent. If one board member wanted to hear the information, I tried to provide it to everybody at the same time. So it might be a sage idea to make sure that this information is provided from a quality standpoint, so you know. But the self-assessment document is a document that you will be completing for Cognia. The learning process, how are we working with boys and girls and making sure they're learning? Action research, and what methods are we using? Action research, this is a new one. And I'm going to make sure, but I think it's standard 29, 25? All right, very good. It's either 29 or 25. I know it's in the growth in learning domain, and it is 25. Let me talk about that standard. That's really important, that we look at professional staff and leaders to make sure they are doing action research to improve their practice. That's so important. I talked about earlier that teachers, leaders, everybody is learning. Everybody's, I'm always learning also. So when we were talking about PD and professional development, this standard is important. I will tell you right now, when we get to the four key characteristics, I want to stop and talk about the standards and how they are, how we've seen the ratings from the standard. We got some data for you to own that. But those last set of standards are crucial, very crucial. They're somewhat new, but what we're trying to do is to make sure that leaders and teachers learn to look at data and learn to take time to reflect on their practice and enhance what they're doing. You know, when I finish this, I'm going to take time and just reflect. You know, I've been doing this training since 2017. Every time I'm trying to make it better. I'm trying to get better, you know? So when you think about these standards, they're what we call a mind shift, where we're shifting from so much compliance-driven thinking to how these standards help guide continuous improvement as a whole. So you can take a moment and just look at those four bullets there. And I'll read some of them for you, but I won't read all of them to you. But I think the first one, standards should be the foundation for improvement for all services and solutions. Everything that we do, we've turned it back to our standards. Everything that I want you all to think about, because our CEO and president stopped us once and he said, okay, you're doing presentations and you're telling people to align, get to our standards, but I don't see where you've got standards to lie. So now, guess what? Mr. Calhoun, that was probably the third or fourth slide that I showed. Mr. Calhoun, that was probably the third or fourth slide that I shared with us, standard alignment, right? Because that's so important. But then, key characteristics are areas of focus, they're going to be, going to be four, we'll talk about those a little bit, that can help you understand and improve the whole organization. The whole organization. And then ensuring quality in teaching and learning. Very important, standards are our foundation. So I want to slow down here and really talk about this slide. We have four key characteristics, and those thirty standards cut across those four key characteristics. We lead off with culture. Good afternoon, it's Waters, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, pardon me, I want to stop, make sure I acknowledge you, okay? But we lead off with culture. Culture. I talked to a principal in Texas. I said, how did you turn around your school from an F school to, to a B school? He said, if you don't fix culture, you're in trouble. Amen? I've seen some of y'all shaking your head, it's okay to say amen, okay? That is so crucial. When I, when I met Dr. Melton here, we became good friends. And when we decided to do the training, I said, yeah, and that I'll be glad to come to Charleston. I'm going to get here a little early. So again, I can prepare, find a good restaurant, I did that, and now I'm here for culture of learning. The next one, leadership for learning. Because once you address culture. And I want to say this to you all. Everybody can be a leader. It does not mean that the principal has to lead along. When I was a principal and superintendent, I never led along, I always wanted others involved. Then the engagement of learning. What's happening in the classroom? What do we see? How are people involved? Growth and learning. How are we measuring growth? How are we seeing success? How's the board involved? How do you know? I will tell you, you all, I went on your website, and that I took a picture of it, so I've got to save it, because I want to show you what was talking about growth that you all had, and you all will see. That's very positive that it's happening. But this one has been somewhat of a struggle for some people, because let me tell you why. I've seen a lot of people have success, but they are not documenting their continuous improvement journey. They don't have data to show results, and how they're monitoring those results, and making sure that students are being successful, remember SSO, successful student outcomes. But again, board members, and then I just realized, there's a clock right over there. Okay. I, I, because I have somebody watching my time, so I see the clock right there, I think that clock.
Accurate.
Okay. I thought it was close, okay? Okay, yeah, it's pretty close, all right. So again, I want to point to, my little red clicker's not working on that. The key characteristics in the standards, again, high-quality institution, learner-centric, focused on the learner, focused on high quality. These are standards that have been resource-based, talking about what makes a, a school a success. How can schools be successful? How can districts be successful? These are these four areas that we're looking at. Leading off with culture, leadership, engagement, then we want to see growth. Makes sense, Trudy? All right. I think I got your name right, I got your name right. Woo, okay, I'm a name person, okay? I want to stop right here, because again, we want to look at our previous standards that we use for boards and our current standards. I want you to look at that. So. Dr. Temple. Just reflect on what you see with the seventeen standards, and the one standard tied to standard eight for the twenty-two standard, because these standards were written in twenty-twenty-two. What do you see there that's kind of different?
I see some different words here.
Okay.
Commitment to the learners, collaboration with leaders, and continuous improvement.
Very good, very good. So what we're going to be looking for as far as standard eight for you all, and I'm going to come back to the different words, because you hit on something very important. The governing authority demonstrates a commitment to learners. I heard that today. I heard talking about learners. By collaborating with leaders, it's going to be important that leaders and the board collaborate to uphold the institution's priorities. Going to ask a question. Have you all determined your priorities for this year? Okay? I could not, I didn't think so, but I wanted to ask that question. It's going to be so important. You know, when you, you ask a good question about norms, very good question. It's going to be important for you all as a board to work with your leaders and community members and partners to think about using data. Okay, we're going, we're going to talk about the different types of data in a few minutes to determine where you want to go. As a bullet, Dr. Temple, I think you have the question.
All right, so in terms of priorities, we, we have set goals and we do have guardrails. Do you not consider that to be?
Okay, very good, very good, very good, very good. Because again, the thing is, it's going to be so important that that is communicated also. Okay, very important, very important.
I have a question. So is there a self-assessment for the board? I know the schools have self-assessments. Do we have a self-assessment that we have to complete for the accreditation?
Not a good question. Cognia does not develop a board self-assessment. But I've seen boards sometime work with their school board association or other consultants to do that. The key thing would be for, for you all. Ms. Robison? I have a question, want to say the key thing for you to be thinking about those key words in that standard. And how do we get a tool to help us get there? Now, again, I've seen from my experience, board members being involved in training. You know, I had some board members that used to live a master board member or something like that, you know, that you got training on this. The key thing is going to be too, when you're looking at priorities and what have you, it's a strategic thinking and planning process. It's not a rushed process. It's something that while everybody may not be at the table and the planning, but find ways to have, make sure everybody has a voice. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. How do you ensure that everybody has a voice? When I look at this twenty-two standard, that's going to require some actions. That's going to require some action, I see you shaking your head, very good. But when you look at twenty-fourteen, I mean twenty-seventeen, you look at standard one point four, the governing authority establishes and ensures adherence to policies that are designed to support institutional effectiveness. Now again, we're making sure that you have policies, and then you ensure that. But I think looking at the new standard, it's going to require a little more action than just somewhat, some people can look at this as a checklist. I want to ask you another question. When I was in a leadership role, I was so busy focusing on policies that addressed operational matters and discipline matters. Okay? Instead of really looking at policies tied to our work with institutional effectiveness, or shall I say, tied to continuous improvement. If I had to go back and be a superintendent, my board and I would work together on when we, we would have a policy that talks about when we're going to look at our priorities and our strategic plan. We wouldn't do that. We would really start focusing on continuous improvement. But again, I was so busy working on operational things, and sometime we work, when it happens, Ms. Watlin, that's when we would run and do a policy. Sometime a policy is only good as it is, you know, sometime you don't need one. And then a code of ethics, where you function within your roles and responsibilities. You'll see those two later on in an assurance, but I really wanted to take some time and talk about this one. You asked some good questions, you know? Self-assessment, where you reflect. As Pina, I think that's so important. That we, you know, that you take some time and self, uh, self reflect. Yes, ma'am?
Um, when you talked about self-assessment before, were you, were you thinking of it as the schools?
Yes, 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 and what I'm going to do, because I'm getting a little ahead of myself, and that's what happens sometimes when I get preaching and talking, that I named the self-assessment before I got to it. But the self-assessment, let me go ahead and tell you, it is a document that the institution submits to Cognia, and the district vote leave that word. It has all thirty standards, and you're rating yourself, it's kind of like you do an internal review, where you self-assess where you are, plan where you want to go, celebrate where you see that you've got noteworthy practices, start work on the areas of improvement, because again, you're, you're doing that. And then even talk about even challenges that you may see. So it's a true self-assessment of the system. And then Cognia will come in when we host the review, and then we will do an evaluation of where we are, where you are on the standard. We will do that, very good question. All right. The standards are rated on four levels, and I'm so glad we got that on the screen for you all. Level one. If a standard is rated at level one, you don't meet the standard. And I put standard eight up there because this is the board training. And we'll talk about some of the key words in a few minutes. Standard two. You're partially meeting the standard, we've seen some improvements, but you're still not meeting the standards. Standard, standard three, you meet the standard. And that means that you've got some processes and procedures and what have you in place of a being effective, effective. Level four, that's a noteworthy practice. That means you've got clear results, things are happening. Ms. Waters, I can take what you're doing here in Charleston County and move it over to another county and get great results. So that's what we're looking at. But I want to tell you for a moment, it's Waters, if you don't mind, to look at some key words that jump out at you with level four.
Um, regular, that the policies and decisions are regularly reviewed, um, and uncompromised commitment to learners, um, and identified priorities.
Very good.
And that we're using our respective roles to consistently and intentionally collaborate to further improvement.
Regularly, consistently, intentionally, those are some key words right there. Now, play along with me, it's Waters, and look at level one. And tell me what jumped out at you as some key words. You, you make it one hundred, you're on it, excellent.
Minimal.
Minimal.
Um, rarely support. Um, seldom collaborate.
Very good. Very good. So each standard out of the thirty standards, we're going to, each standard has its own rulebook. Okay, each standard has its own rulebook, but I wanted to point that out. Ms. Kelly, do you mind reading that quote for me?
Certainly. If we want something we've never had in our schools, we need to do something we've never done.
I have a quote for you to think about, right? Sometime when you're thinking about change, sometimes you have to do things you've never done before. You know? As a board, that's very important for you, in your word. This is a slide that got you all. What I saw on your, on your website. State tests show more, more, this class is not going to help me. Charleston County School students are ready. Late test showed that Charleston County School District students, more students are ready. Very impressive, very impressive. The key thing is going to be, when you've had success, how do you sustain that success? How do you sustain that? That's so important. Let's look at some data you all. This is data from the first round of reviews after implementation of the standards. On one side, you see South Carolina. On the other side, you see Cognia. And remember I told you, Cognia encompasses ninety-plus countries. Okay, so these are reviews from over about a thousand plus reviews, okay? And then Annette would know the number in South Carolina.
Twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-three, all right, very good. So one thing I want to look at, thank you, Annette. Look at where boards are from around the globe, they're average. And I'm going to have to walk over here and I'm going to use my outside voice, okay? Doctor, is here, hear me in the back? Very good. So when you look at the four key characteristics, remember we talked about the four key characteristics, where the standards are in those four key characteristics? If we look at culture, we see that pretty much the average for these standards overall was three point one. But when we're looking at South Carolina's standard four, standard four. And then you have the doctor in front of you, what the standard four say, you see, you didn't have some column, go ahead. Standard four.
Standard four, learners benefit from a formal structure that fosters positive relationships with peers and adults.
So that standard is low in South Carolina. But look at the average around the globe with Cognia, three point one. That's something that you might want to think about as a board and leadership team. All right, so, but we've been doing this training since two thousand seventeen, so we see standard eight is pretty high in South Carolina. It's a three point five from the schools we did last year. Looking around the nation, was that three point two? So South Carolina is higher than where we are across the globe, I'm sorry. The key thing would be, as you're looking at the self-assessment two, Dr. Temple, that you brought up, these are all thirty standards for South Carolina and for Cognia. It's going to let me know where some successes are, and what some areas are focused on, look at engagement. Look at Cognia. But then, boy, look at South Carolina. That's an area from a structural standpoint, I have three instructors people back there, and when you're looking at engagement, what's going on? What we don't worry about, what, okay? Every time, every time I, you take a break. But what we've seen is borders around the globe. that growth area, growth in learning area, schools and Cognia, a somewhat aligned. Right there with the number one. Sometime we get started working in certain areas. But do we have good priorities? And processes in place to monitor our growth? As a superintendent, I used to, with our leadership team, we used to do a lot of monitoring and adjusting. Monitoring and adjusting, you used to point my finger to, I know you talked about that after the question about goals. That's okay. To monitor and adjust, that's what it's all about. And so again, even after the accreditation engagement, now we have what we call an accreditation progress follow-up review. But there's going to be areas that we celebrate, but there's going to be areas for next steps too for the system. So I really wanted to take some time and point that out to you because you can kind of see where schools are from a state standpoint, then from a global standpoint. So right now, the engagement of learning is an area that I see in South Carolina.
Dr. Harrison, can you, uh, I'm, I'm tracking with the GPA rating and the scale, but are the, are the gray bars trend vectors or what are the gray bars along each?
Very good question. Your other thing, right here, you're below the average, right here, you're midway. That's what I'm seeing at the book of that, which is gray arrows, arrows are telling me. But that's a great question.
Vertical lines or the?
The vertical.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, yeah. Because I had a similar question, so very good. Wow, this board is really on it. Excellent, excellent. Great question.
Um, I have a question. So this is South Carolina and then this is national. Do you, where can we find Charleston?
Oh. Good question. All right, so based on that question, you haven't had your review yet. Once you have your review, then we'll be able to run the, the data for you.
What about the previous five?
Oh, oh, we, we got, we can, we can give you that through Ms. Document. Yeah, we have that. Very good question. And so we, Doc Melton, that's something we will do, okay? All right. Ooh, thank you. Now I can walk around, I've been wanting to do that all along. Okay?
I just, I think it's important for us as a board to see where we were five years ago. And before we start new assessments.
Can I shake your hand? Yeah, that's a good point. Powerful question, very good question. I really think it would, it's, it's a wise idea to always look at where you were. The only thing I would tell you when you do that, those standards cut across three different domains. But you know what I'm going to do, I'm going to do one better for you. I have in my possession a crosswalk of twenty seventeen standards and twenty twenty-two standards. I'm going to organize a resource page for boards that will work through Ms. Huggins here to make sure that she gets that to you all. But what you want to do, you get that, those standards cut across three different domains. Leadership, learning, and resource capacity. But what we have done, we have aligned them to these new standards. So you'll be able to see where you had noteworthy areas and areas for next step. And so what we'll do, we'll work through you and make sure all those resources are given. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Policies and procedures for boards. I've taken you about thirty-five thousand square, thirty-five thousand feet. Now we're getting ready to start our descent, you know? I want to shift to policies. Why do you want to talk about policies, Andre? Because that's a board. You need to know your accreditation status. That's important. Cognia has three accreditation statuses. You're either going to be accredited where you meet most of the standards from the self-assessment, meet most of the thirty standards from the self-assessment. Accredited under review where you meet some of the standards, but not enough to be accredited. And that's why I'm going to make sure that you have our policies and procedures document on your resource page because it gives a clear definition. Accredited under conditions. That means that, because when you are credited under review, Cognia does a follow-up monitoring review. Okay, to see if you're working on areas that we left for you. Accredited under review warrants a follow-up review, okay? Accredited under conditions means that we've been following up, but we haven't seen the change. Okay? That's the last phase before accreditation could be dropped or you could lose accreditation. I like to let boards know that, not so much as a threat, but for information. So please don't take this slide where, oh, this is the, no. I like for you all to know as a board. So again, right now, not putting you on the spot, but if I, I, I'm almost certain they are accredited, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, they are fully accredited. I thought so, okay? All right, if you weren't, I probably would, no. So I think a key thing to continue to work hard and look at, like you say, past data and what have you, and go from there. Talking about the review and attitudes and characteristics. I'd like for boards to know this, it's an opportunity to learn. I've learned some things tonight just for some, for some questions you've asked. And I know based on what you said, I'm going to make sure that we give a good explanation of those charts and what have you and your resource, so you will know. So when you are, are on the chart, next year you can talk through that, okay? A chance to assess your overall school culture. It's a peer review. It's not a got you. Don't think of the accreditation engagement review as a got you. Although I think I'm perfect, my wife lets me know every day I'm not. Okay? She's about to let me know in a few minutes as we head to Dublin, Georgia, I'll stop in Portland. But it's not a perfect situation. The review is going to showcase some things that you're doing well, noteworthy practices. And the review also will talk about next step for improvement, areas for improvement. So again, take it as an opportunity to reflect on things you're doing well and of course, areas for improvement. Count of four boards. Keep this in mind. I think some of you all hit on this earlier. Ms. Watlin, do you mind reading that first bullet, bullet for me, please?
Sure. The purpose, to provide feedback to your institution concerning next steps in the improvement journey.
Go ahead and do the next one since you did that first one for me.
To determine what, to what degree your institution meets the Cognia performance standards.
So we're looking at next steps and we're going to, the report will talk about to what degree you meet those thirty standards. Or the review. And kind of the outcomes, the findings from the report presents the findings, you will see that. Board members, a key thing for US chairperson to think about, how do we communicate this with our community? When the report comes out and it is approved, we, let me tell you, we used to do, some of you all who've been on the board long enough or community members, you may have remember where we did an oral exit report after each review. But let me explain it this way. I get it really easy. As a former superintendent, Mr. Calhoun, I may tell you the second, I may tell you, my friend, I'm going to hire you as the assistant principal. Go ahead and tell everybody to come to the board meeting, put it on Facebook and everything. But when I make the recommendations, there may be questions. And what if you don't get approved? So let me tell you why we start making sure, because that was preliminary. Okay, we have an accreditation commission just like you that approves our reports that they have to go through. So I wouldn't want to stand here, Mr. Kelly, and say, this is happening and then our commission has a question. Makes sense, you all? So now we don't do that all exit report anymore. We wait until it is official through our global commission. And once you get the report that has gone through our global commission and we're saying, now you go ahead, communicate it. Okay? I didn't, I, I knew I would be up here with you all after that. And accreditation recognition, kind of like I said, accredited, accredited on review, accredited under conditions. I always tell people this, I told superintendents this about two weeks ago. We don't find time to celebrate. If you have one piece of success, stop and celebrate. We're so quick to just move to the next thing. Stop, celebrate the successes and noteworthy practices or what have you from that report. But, and then start planning for next steps. Look at your accreditation recognition. Talk about that, explain what's, what it means. That's important. You know, I was, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a person that loves and, and I'm guilty of this, but I'm, what's a superintendent? I tried to make everybody happy. And some of y'all up here and people out there, you know that's hard to do, right? Amen? Yeah, all right, thank you back there. That's why I try to find ways to celebrate everybody. As a teacher, I, I would try to find something good with everybody. So let's look at the three accreditation phases. The first phase, and remember reflection and analysis go throughout this. The first phase you'll do, the system does a self-assessment. Okay? That's where you self-assess where you are against the thirty standards. Then you host an accreditation engagement review, then you're going to have a follow-up report. I say to you, ask questions about this self-assessment document. I'm going to put it on your resource page because you've asked questions about it. So I'm going to make sure that you all see what it looks like and you'll have a copy, okay? But again, that's your work. Then we come in and do the review and then, uh, follow-up progress. I like to tell boards this, the report takes about sixty to ninety days to get done. It's going to have the ratings of all the standards, but pay attention to the narratives, please. Because the standards ratings are important, you see what we fall on a scale of one to four. But make sure you look at what those narratives are saying because they really unpack the standards. Really looking at noteworthy practices and areas for improvement. And use that as a tool to move forward. In my, in my line of work, I had my, my strategic plan aligned with my accreditation review when I was a superintendent. Because that was a great tool to give me some guidance on next steps. And so that's what we did. Because I mean, it's a comprehensive review.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, um, the accreditation engagement review process, what does that look like?
Okay, very good question, very good question. The engagement review process was like this. The first thing happens, you will submit your self-assessment. Okay, and you'll work with your regional, your system will work with the regional accreditation evaluator. Once that's submitted, then that evaluator will work with the district, comes in, some of it is done through Zoom and evaluate what you've done from the self-assessment standpoint. Another piece, interviews. Okay? Because we'll get information from the self-assessment, but we also will get information from selected interviews. And I can tell you right now, we will, that lead evaluator or regional accreditation evaluator, the person leading this process, should interview selected leaders in the district. And guess who else gets to talk? Selected members of the board, we always talk to the chair. And I want to go back to say this. Normally it's the chair, vice chair, but the board can give the superintendent feedback about whom they want to be interviewed. Okay? And then you're interviewed, so we look at the self-assessment document. We do interviews. And if, if, if the evaluator says, working with the superintendent to say, hey, we might want to visit some schools, we can do that outside. Okay? But a key role for you, thanks to your question, was that board members will be, select board members will be interviewed. But I know the chair will be, okay? But again, from there, you all talk through it. Let your lead evaluator, let the superintendent know how you want that done. You know, hey, Cognia, if, if you feel that we want two board members, three board members, I mean, I'm sure that that could happen, okay? All right? So very good question. Ever since we've been doing this process, we've interviewed board members mainly. But we've done other things, you know, look at evidence and interview notice as well. You know, we've even interviewed students, parents, anybody that can give us the information tied back to the standards. What we're trying to do, Dr. Temple, is make sure we get as much information as possible to do a quality job of evaluating those standards. So when you get a report that a census may read off based on the review of information, interviews, classroom visits or what have you. The team found that Charleston County School District had implemented a measure to ensure student engagement increase. We saw that through interviews, blah, 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 blah. So.
So with eighty schools, is there a, is there a percentage of schools that you?
It would be something to that effect, yeah. We wouldn't dare to come visit our eighty schools, no.
I know, that's hard.
No, no. And again, here's the key thing too. It's going to be working through your district leadership to kind of work with the regional accreditation evaluator to make that happen too. I think, Mr. Calhoun the second, you led off with this. And I would want to make sure that if we were visiting schools, that we're going to represent a sampling of the entire district. You know, as an old superintendent, I want to bring Watlin to everybody who's doing a good job. Ms. Watlin. But then am I showing the true picture? Okay? So, good questions, great question. The, the great aim of education is not knowledge, but action. We've given you some knowledge today. How do you act on that? How do you act on that as a board? I think that's important. Assurances. Assurances are just what they say on the slide where we talk about requirements that institutions must meet. Requirements that institution must meet tied to our policies and procedures. And I want to say this to you. Your regional accreditation evaluator should be working closely with the district to make sure that you're meeting these assurances even before the review happens. Now, looking at assurance number four. Assurance number four. Who's in assurance number four? Ms. Waters, you've been reading, so we'll all leave you all for it. But do you mind reading assurance number four for me, please?
No, I don't mind. The governing authority adheres to written policies that govern its conduct, decision-making, ethics, and authority, and engages in training aligned to its roles and responsibilities.
That's an assurance. That's an assurance for you all. So again, I tell you, training that you're involved in, you, we need to make sure we are documenting our training and things of that nature. Looking at decision-making, conduct, all those pieces will be, the lead evaluator will be looking at. This last part that I want to talk to you about ties to the promise of continuous improvement. The promise. The promise. Because again, we think about commitment that you saw. But promise is somewhat the same thing. Again, as an educator, when I walk into the classroom or as a leader, I think about the promise I'm making. When I was a school bus driver, I thought about the promise I was making to those parents to make sure I got those 80 kids home safely or what have you. You know? So when we think about a prom, the promise of continuous improvement, I want you all to think about achieving, sustaining, embedding change in a generation. Ms. McKinney, do you mind reading that for me?
I would be delighted, but my voice will not overcome that picture. It's so precious. Every institution, regardless of where they are today, can be better tomorrow.
Thank you. Good job. And look at that little picture. You can't say no to that little picture. Every institution. Now, take out institution and put every teacher. Okay? Every student. Okay? Every board member. Regardless of where you are today, you can be better tomorrow. Every vice president of accreditation service, well, I'm the one, I guess, okay? I can be better. That's what, you know, if I had to go back and serve as a principal in a building, that's probably something I'll have whenever people walk in. And I'll probably change that now institution to students and others. I keep the picture, that's a precious picture. I want you to think about these questions tied to continuous improvement for your homework assignment. Why shouldn't the governing authority or board of trustees engage in continuous improvement? You own it. It's part of your responsibility. And some of the great questions you all have asked tonight, I know you want to be engaged. Look at the results-driven question. How important is it to improve our schools so that the results are consistent, equitable, sustainable and scalable? Making sure that it happens. Those are your homework assignments. Look at what continuous improvement is and what it is not. Why do you think I put hopeful under what it is as the top one? Because without hope, what do you have? That's right. Nothing. It's hopeful. Think about it. I knew I wasn't athletic and I was not an athlete in high school. But when I tried that for the basketball team, my coach let me do it, but I didn't make it. But he gave me the job of helping out with the management as a ball boy or whatever. It's hopeful, it's sustainable. It's about students, problem solving. Use data to, to make informed decisions based on research, it says what's working. It's not isolated. You don't lead alone. That's something I want you to make sure. And we don't just chase initiatives, just chase initiatives. But that last one, Dr. Temple, what did I say in that last one? It's not a quick what? It's not a quick fix. It's kind of like sometime we decide that, hey, I'm gonna cut back. I'm not gonna have that Big Mac today and hoping that something happened where I could button this jacket, no. It takes some, takes some work, okay? It's not a quick fix. But I tell you one thing I want to tell boards. You know, I think about initiatives in the district. Think about the initiatives that you are approving. Dollars and what have you for. Ask questions about how they work. Okay? If you all vote to say that we're going to put, to support literacy in our elementary school or even your high school, you put 100, spent 100 grand for a new initiatives and resources. It's okay to ask how, how's that working? Because again, you're accountable to these people. It's okay to ask those questions. That's something that I always like for boards to know. We've talked about some of these already. But the board's role in continuous improvement, working with the superintendent to promote student learning, collaborating with the superintendent and district leadership to develop long-range plans, monitoring priorities or goals or actions, and asking questions about the progress. That's okay. Hey, I know we just voted on putting, putting instructional coaches in all our middle schools because our middle schools students, we saw that they needed, our teachers needed help with promoting new strategies and what have you. How's that going? Oh, it's going fine. Well, what data do you have? How can you, can you tell us more? That's okay. It's okay. If I had to go back again, I I saw this idea from a superintendent. And I probably would do it if I were back a superintendent or D. I found myself as superintendent being the voice of my schools and telling board members, hey, this is where school A is, school B is. But I saw another superintendent say, no, my principals will come and present and give information. You know? And update the board in a positive way, of course, where their schools are. There's nothing wrong with that. I would probably do something similar to that. A final strategy to kind of know where your schools are. Cognia looks at these types of data points, perception data. We have surveys that, if you are a member, you can use our surveys, culture climate surveys and give those surveys, LSO surveys through our platform and just see where people are. I think perception data is so important as you are planning for your next steps and what have you in your strategic thinking and planning process. Demographic data, numbers. Numbers. We've got a lot of teachers right now with 25-plus years. We need to be thinking about that. Because I got a slide coming up to talk about that. Student performance data, program evaluation data, data tied to experiences in the classroom, that's what we mean there. Look at the challenges of continuous improvement for boards. Looking at how you're going to do your resources. Fixing the present versus creating the future. You got to think about the future. I, like I said, I did a training on futures thinking. If somebody had told me Bailey, in 20, in 2018, if someone had told me in 2020, there was going to be a disease that changes our lives a great deal, I would have said, no way. But it happened. So what I learned from that to start thinking from a future standpoint, how could things change for us in this district that we've got to be prepared for? Because you have to be ready. Because the key thing is you are, even when this happened, school had to continue, right? Yeah. And then communicating with your stakeholders for buy-in. When I have a commitment, that means we're gonna work together. Have you sold me, y'all have heard the southern term, you sold me on that. Right? Yeah. When it was just a handshake and hey, we moved on. Some questions for you to think about, board. Your strategic plan is the key. Have you revisited your strategic plans since COVID? Does the plan include priorities for supporting and retaining highly effective staff? Does everybody have a voice? What data or resource did you use to develop the plan? That's something you think about as you move on. Ooh, this is an interesting slide, you all. This is part of my training. And then I got about 15 more minutes, right? All right, very good. So, this is a training. Board members, I want you to look, and I'm sorry that it's cut off part of it, but you all can see the whole thing, right? The research now talks about the generational gap and its impact on education and the workforce in general. So, and this, when I'm working with superintendents and boards, this is just some characteristics of possible people we have in our school. We probably don't have a lot of traditionalists in our schools. Well, we probably got some baby boomers, Gen Xs, millennials and Gen Zs in our school. The key thing that we want you to think about, I'm so, I'm a Gen X, but I was raised by traditionalist. So I have those values of the traditionalist. My mom and dad were traditionalist. So if you look at leadership, I'm okay accepting poor management. Okay? Uh huh. And positional leadership. But I just want to have some face-to-face time with you. Okay? Mm-hmm. But look over at leadership with Gen Zs. You don't have to be positive with me. But look what that Gen Z says. I want positive what? Feedback. Another thing with Gen Zs, I have one, you all. I have one. I pay for her phone. I pay for her phone. I pay for Andrea's phone. Andre, Andrea. I can call her right now and you know she's gonna tell me, text me. If my dad paid for my phone, Jared, guess what? I'm answering him. Another thing that you have to watch, looking at these different types of generational gaps. Who's left in the system? As a Gen X person, Keith, if I make a commitment to you, it's a commitment. I saw as assistant superintendent personnel, when I hired some Gen Z teachers, I would be so happy, I got everybody hired. Come July, end of July. If Anita got something better for them, forget about that handshake. They gone. So it is training again, board members and leaders. There's a gap in the mind on how people think. You got to know how to manage the gap to bridge the gap. But it'd be interesting just for you to run some data to see where, where, where do people follow. And then after COVID, what we also saw, a lot of people, boomers and even some Gen Xs, they retired. I want you to read this last quote for me. Chair.
The challenges of today are opportunities for tomorrow.
Keep that in mind. Parents, the challenges of today are opportunities for tomorrow. Don't use the words challenge anymore, look at it as an opportunity. Look at it as an opportunity. I heard somebody say earlier that somebody said, we don't have, if, don't say we have a problem, just say, hey, no worries, we'll get it fixed. I think that was Buffett who said that. Last slide right here. You all, board members, this is an individual training of its own. But as a Cognia member, these are tools that I like for boards to know about. We have an observation tool tied Elliot, where you can use this tool to really assess student learning and what students, observation tied to what students are doing in the classroom. This is a student observation tool. Diagnostics that has a lot of different tools in there to help guide their continuous improvement and effectiveness. That's where your self-assessment is going to go. Surveys, strategies, what we call E-Proof Strategies, I got a slide for that. Assessment, workspaces, kind of area where you upload all your information prior to the accreditation engagement review. Then being a trusted partner, different solutions where you determine your need and customize what you need and then see if we got a way to help you solution. That's what we tell your schools. This is something that I like for boards to know. And most of these plates, I know, surveys, strategies, Elliot, even diagnosis, diagnostic can yield information for you. From E-Proof Strategies, we have a place where you can build your continuous improvement plan or your strategic plan. This document right here is a one-sheeter. It's called a strategy map. It's colorful. If I were back as a super, I would do this. I would equip my board with this and others who wanted to have a copy to showcase what we're working on. If you look at this sample, it has your vision, your mission, belief in five areas of focus. And under those five areas, you have your objectives, what critical initiatives you're going to do and how you're going to manage it. Okay? That's a tool you can build right inside E-Proof Strategies. And then Melton, Dr. Melton can help connect that. And then this is our Cognia continuous improvement system, how we build and get to this strategy map. Always envision first. Plan on how you're going to build your plan, implement your plan, but have time to reflect and evaluate. That's so important on any initiative that you do. Anita? I haven't called on you, but I'm gonna call on you to read that last bullet right there for me.
We should never give up the opportunity to say something great about our schools.
No matter what's going on in the house, it could be on fire. But always come back and talk about your schools in a positive way. Work through it. But that's so important, you all. I want to thank you all so much. I timed this thing. I said, they want to run over. But I want to thank you for your commitment to accreditation and continuous improvement through Cognia. If you have follow-up questions and what have you, what I talked about, you can reach out to Dr. Melton or you have my contact. What am I going to do for you all? I'm going to make sure that we build a resource, one-stop shop, pamphlet tool, where you have some of the resources that I talked about with the description of each of them. So again, Chairperson McKinney, board members, thank you for welcoming me to Charleston School District.
Well, thank you, and I have one quick question because of the last slide. And that's the desire of all of us. We understand, and it was wonderful that you started off, this is not an I gotcha. This is I, let's evaluate and assess, praise, move forward. So it's understandable that staff, principals, schools, parents, people may feel stressed about this. How can we as trustees let them know, we've got your back, we're all in this together? We're gonna bring out the best things.
Very good question. I think the key slide that does that talks, I think it was slide five or six, that talks about an effective board. Communication is so important. Working collaboratively. Supporting your community and your staff. And just being transparent. And last but something I think got your attention too, because I noticed, and I'm a teacher first. You talk, when I talked about being strategic thinkers and planners, I watched your face. I think that's something too for the board, but the key thing is let the process be used to help guide your next steps towards continuous improvement. I think that's still important too. Just let it guide you. Because it's going to be able to help you grow as a system. Great question, but again, thank you all so much for having me. I, I really have enjoyed communicating with you all today. If you have follow-up, you know how to work with Ms. Huggins, then we will be glad to support you in any, anyway. We are here to support continuous improvement through the accreditation process. Thank you all so very much for having me.
Um, we have does the board members want to ask any questions before we recess? Um, the plan was to recess for about 15 minutes. Okay, we will go ahead and recess and reconvene at 4:15. Okay, we will go ahead and recess and reconvene at 4:15. Okay, we will go ahead and recess and reconvene at 4:15. All right, we still have a few minutes, but it seems like everybody's ready to proceed. So unless there's some objections, we'll go ahead and re, restart the meeting. We'll move on to items three A, the N A E Y C accreditation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Huggins.
Thank you, Mrs. Wotley. Good afternoon, Ms. McKinney, board. We're excited to be here. I want to take just a second, if you don't mind, before we move on to item three A to acknowledge Mr. Wilbur Johnson to my left, who will be acting as our staff attorney throughout today's session. Mr. Johnson is an attorney here in Charleston. He served as the managing partner of Young Clement Rivers Law Firm here against its 2009. I'm proud that he's practiced ball in the area for over 40 years. I'm not going to say quite how many, Mr. Johnson, you look just like I remember you from 25 years ago. In his role as managing partner, Wilbur has overseen the operations of his law firm, including 43 partners and associates and approximately 85 other professional and support staff. In addition, Mr. Johnson maintains an active law practice primarily in the areas of employment, labor law, and administrative and regulatory law. So I'd like to welcome Wilbur, thank him for being here to serve the district today. And I'd also like to acknowledge that our parliamentarian, Liz Guthridge, had to step out to take some work-related calls. And while she has stepped out, if there are any questions regarding parliamentary procedure, Mr. Johnson has agreed to answer those on our behalf. So welcome, Mr. Johnson. I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Denny, who will take some time to do just what Dr. Harrison said earlier. It's important for districts to do to celebrate the great work going on here in Charleston. So Ms. Denny.
So one of, one of the items of great work that we're really proud of is our three schools that have all earned NACI accreditation. And I'm going to take a quick moment before introducing them to explain to everybody watching what NACI accreditation is. So early childhood programs accredited and NACI accreditation of early learning programs have voluntarily undergone a comprehensive process of internal self-study and continuous quality improvement. They demonstrate a high-quality program. They demonstrate a high-quality program that provides safe and nurturing environments while promoting healthy development in young children. By meeting the 10 NACI early learning program standards, which are research-based and best practices for young children's development and learning, they truly provide an excellent educational opportunity. Our three NACI accredited schools have earned their accreditation and done so with the support of Ms. Kim Foxworth, our executive director of early childhood readiness. And now I'd like to introduce our three principals, Principal James from Midland Park, Principal Sims, from Laurel Hill, and Principal Hart from Mary Ford. As we launch into our Cognia accreditation process, these schools are really a model for what that system of continuous improvement looks like and having that focus on excellence for all children. Thank you. Thank y'all, you've really demonstrated excellence in CCSD, and we're grateful.
Thank you, Ms. Denny, and thank you, board members, for acknowledging the great work of our principals and our teachers and families in those schools. Accomplishing NACI accreditation is quite a heroic feat. And I'd like to take a moment, Ms. Foxworth is one to work behind the scenes all the time, but I'd like to take a second and ask her to stand and be acknowledged for her exceptional leadership here at the central level. I'm going to move on now to the acting superintendent's report. Stephen's going to pull it up. Each time as we await the superintendent's return, we'll start the report with a spotlight on the work, the great work going on across the district. And so today, I've asked the principal at North Charleston Elementary, if she and the principal at Morningside Middle, and I think that Mr. White had an emergency at school and may not be able to be here. But I've asked Mrs. Brubaker and Mr. White to talk to you today about the Ron Clark House System, which is an effort by school principals and teachers across our district and some of our schools to improve the climate. You heard Dr. Harrison talk earlier about how necessary it is for the culture and climate in any school to change in order to result in improved student outcomes. And so we're going to talk today about the Ron Clark House System, and we're going to quickly show you a 90-second video that we put together to share with principals and other school leaders this summer. Stephen, would you click on that video link if you don't mind, please, sir? You might have to go out, Stephen, out of that presentation mode and click it. You know what, Stephen? I'm going to let Ms. Brubaker turn it over to Ms. Brubaker, if you want to work on it for a second. Is that okay? All right, then I'm going to introduce you, Melissa Brubaker, the proud principal of North Charleston Elementary School. She's going to talk to you a little bit about the Ron Clark system there and talk to you about the improved outcomes she's seen with students and families and students as a result. Ms. Brubaker?
So thank you for letting us be here this evening. I am excited to represent many of the schools who are actually using the Ron Clark system. And my team member, Ryan Stone, hoped to be here this evening, but he actually took a group of our students to Atlanta this weekend for a leadership conference and just couldn't make it happen after that long weekend. So I do have his remarks that I'll read. But one of the things that prompted us to begin the Ron Clark system was the partnership in our feeder program with
Yes, sir. With Morningside Middle School, finding a way to make that connection between both of our schools and that feeder pattern. And so George White, Michael White, who was there previously, already was moving toward the house system. And so we decided, and it's something that I have actually tried before at another school, and we decided to join them as a way to build some excitement through that gap of our students moving from North Charleston to Morningside. And it has been a really great success so far. We are thrilled with the community that it has built. I think sometimes our teachers are more excited about it than our students, particularly when we do our active competition pieces. But I'm going to read what Mr. Stone put together. This past weekend, six of our students had the opportunity to visit the Ron Clark Academy to participate in the first-ever Leadership Academy. These fourth and fifth grade students not only met fellow students from schools across the nation, including one of our own, Charles Pinkney, actually sent some students as well, which was really exciting for them to meet up there. They attended sessions on the art of public speaking, how to be great leaders, and learned how to run effective house meetings at our school. Our students were accompanied by some of our teacher house leaders who had fully embraced this system and taking the lead on running house-related activities. To date, we have sent 25 teachers and staff to the Ron Clark Academy to receive professional development and learn methods for instilling a passion for learning and helping our children achieve great levels of success. Our teachers learned ways to increase student engagement, ensure academic rigor, and create a climate and culture that leads to success. Here's what our staff are saying. RCA is an incredible example of how thinking outside the box can inspire students and teachers to do great things and will make a positive impact in society. The Ron Clark Academy is not just a school, it's a movement. While visiting, I witnessed a place where passion, innovation, and creativity and education come to life and where students are inspired to dream big and achieve greatness. So each school adopts and personalizes the house system to meet the needs of their school community. No one-size-fits-all, in an effort to ignite passion for learning. Using this system provides support and encouragement, reflects high expectations for students' behavior, promotes parental involvement, and ensures a safe, secure environment for all. One of the things that I love about this system is the sense of community. It is not an exclusionary system. It includes every single person in our building despite behavior. And so any student, regardless of what they have done leading up to an event, they participate because they are all part of our family. And that's what we want them to feel like when they come in our building, that it is not just because you earned 25 points this quarter that you get to participate. Everybody gets to participate, and that's how we build that sense of community. We've seen a great result, in part because of this, in part because of other things that we've done in the school as well. But we are able to retain all of our teachers this past year, which is very exciting. And I do think the creativity, the excitement that they feel as we are participating in these type of things, opportunities they have for professional growth and feeling excited about teaching has helped keep them motivated even on the most challenging days. And so I thank you for allowing us to have the funds through ESAR to make a lot of this happen for our students. And I see three Isabendys up at front, I'm Isabendi too, the House of Courage. So anytime if you'd like to come out and check out what we're doing in person, it's pretty exciting to see it. So you're welcome to come out anytime and experience. And I'm sure that I speak for Mr. White as well, that we'd love to have you come out and experience one of our days.
Thank you, Mrs. Brubaker. Will we be able to queue that video up, Mrs. Denny? Thank you, Stephen.
More and more CCSD elementary schools are incorporating the Ron Clark Academy house system to create a more dynamic, engaging, and powerful culture and climate for students and staff. Schools such as Carolina Park, Charles Pinkney, North Charleston Elementary, St. Andrews, and Mini Hughes are using this creative way to build community and celebrate student success. Schools are divided into four to eight houses, with each house having a name and multiple grades. Throughout the year, the students engage in friendly competitions in academics, arts, athletics, and more to gain points for their house. The camaraderie leads to children feeling valued and secure. And when students feel valued and secure, they will take chances and pursue their dreams inside and outside the school walls. If you believe your school could benefit from the Ron Clark Academy house system, visit RCAhousesystem.com to learn more.
So thank you again, Ms. Brubaker, for sharing how the house system has impacted the culture at North Charleston Elementary. I see a good many principals in the audience, and there are several here that also implement the house system. Stephen, we're on slide three, and on that slide, you'll see some of those schools. I'd ask those principals, yes, ma'am, I'm looking at you all, to stand up now. If you're in a school that implements the Ron Clark system, if you please stand. Thank you. So on slide three, you'll see there are several schools listed here. I know Mr. Whitman's in here. He didn't stand up, so I'm calling him out. I saw him come in, Cochran, Carolina Park, CE Williams North, Charles Pinkney, Shakora, Humley Park, Mini Hughes, Morningside, North Charleston Elementary, RB Stall, and St. Andrews School of Math and Science. And what you, as board members, have challenged us to do is think about the things in our system that are creating positive change for children. And if you look at this slide, you'll see some of the highlights of that here. All schools, all of those schools listed there have increased student achievement in ELA math or college and career readiness at the middle and high school level. Morningside Middle has seen a drastic reduction in the number of days of out-of-school and in-school suspension among its students. And I know Mr. White was hoping to talk to you about that this evening. North Charleston Elementary, you'll see in the last three bullets here, as we measure the sense of belonging among both students and faculty, you'll see increased rates here of teachers rating their sense of belonging and supportive relationships, and students also rating their sense of belonging. So as we look long-term at things we want to sustain, as Mrs. Brubaker mentioned post-COVID, we're going to shine a spotlight on what we're doing as a district and the data, as Dr. Harrison referenced earlier, that we have to support those things. And I think that most, if not all, of the principals in the room who have implemented this system would suggest that it is a positive, positive thing for both kids, school culture, and communities. So we'll move on now. There are two more slides that I think that Mr. White, and I think I have a clicker here, Stephen. I'm sorry. If it doesn't work, you could just click for me, just go right ahead, friend, go right ahead. It's not moving. So the next few slides, as we're working on technology, because it's great when it works and when it does it, it's not so fun, as you can tell. The next few slides, we're going to focus on the board's goal one around literacy. And tonight, as you'll recall, we developed a calendar collaboratively back, I think, in January or February, where you, as a board, told us how you wanted us to report to you on student outcomes. And tonight, for tonight's presentation, goal one literacy was up. You'll recall that Mrs. Simmons, a couple of weeks ago, presented to you information about students overall and their performance in math, reading, and around college and career readiness. But tonight, or this afternoon, we're going to focus on student literacy results, particularly for African-American and Hispanic students, which is where Mr. Kennedy, at the time, worked collaboratively with the board to develop goals so that we could focus on improved outcomes for all students. So I know, board members, you have board docs. It seems that we're having some trouble with the technology. So if you'll join me and to the public, I'm sorry, we'll get that up as soon as we can. If you'll look on slide nine, board members, and Mrs. Roberson, maybe you can help me. Is the top of that slide revision 2027 for you? Okay, so you'll see the board goal here. The percentage of Black, African-American, and Hispanic fifth-grade students, again, these are fifth-grade students, right? Reading on grade level will increase from 25 and a half percent in 2022 to 60.7% in July '27. And the measurement here is SC Ready ELA. Our stretch target goal was 32.4%. And as Ms. Simmons shared a few weeks ago, and I want to affirm for you now, our status met even that stretch goal, which is really hard sometimes for principals when we sit down to establish goals to swallow, because those are very ambitious, audacious goals. And we're proud as a district that we've met that goal and we're on track. If we continue the progress we've made in literacy to meet our goal of reaching all fifth graders. If we go on to slide 10 here, board, you'll see that all fifth-grade students first, Mrs. Denny, it's the slide that says all fifth-grade students at the top. You'll see that students have grown on SC Ready, again, this is all fifth-grade students. We're not looking at those student groups yet. From 2021 to 2023, from 43.2% to 61.5%. The rate of change there is almost 50%. And that is a significant rate of change when you're looking to move students, particularly in literacy. What I want to draw your attention to, several of you asked questions, and Ms. Simmons presented a few weeks ago, that 2020 was COVID. So not only are students performing better than they performed right before COVID, but if you go back even to 2017, you'll see that only 46.2% of all fifth-grade students were meeting gains, meeting the goals that were established back in 2017, were met or ready. And again, that has grown from 2017, again, pre-COVID. We are far surpassing our student goals and far surpassing how students perform then. Denny, next slide. You'll see here, you've asked us over time how your own constituent districts have done. Ms. Roberson earlier talked about advocacy for her constituent area and your constituent areas based on how you were elected. So what we did in this slide, and I want to thank Mrs. Roberts for her help here and Mrs. Simmons, is we broke down by constituent area how students have performed over time. And you will see that regardless of constituent area, if you want to find the one or ones, because several of you represent several constituent areas that you represent, you'll see how well your students have performed since 2021. So just take a second there and see and reflect. From District Two in Mount Pleasant, from 71 to 84.3%, again, two short years. Look at the growth in North Charleston, 14.5% to 30.7%. In District 23, from 6% of students reading at or above grade level in 2021 to over 24.5% last year. Again, thank you. And those applause are due to the people sitting behind me. If you're a principal in this room, would you please stand up? So that recognition and those accolades are due to the people that So that recognition and those accolades are due to the people that sit behind us up here with the teachers in their buildings, working each and every day. So I really want to thank them. Ms. Denny, on to the next slide. You'll see here, as we look again, we started with all students. Now let's look at students of poverty and how, over time, they've progressed in regards to their achievement. And again, Ms. Simmons hit a bit on this a few weeks ago as we took a global look at literacy. But as we drill down this week, you'll see here with students of poverty, look at that rate of change, 96.9%, almost a 20% increase. And our students of poverty, you'll see here, if you look at 2019, you'll see the impact of COVID from 2019 to 2021, particularly on our students in poverty. You'll see how they declined from that lack of face-to-face interaction with teachers, those lack of universal supports that many of our other students had. Students of poverty suffered at greater degrees. But you'll see that over the last two years, again, almost 100% rate of change in that nearly 40% of those students are reading at or above grade level. Ms. Denny? Now we're going to drill down to our African-American and Hispanic students as a group. Again, 122% rate of change over the last two years. You'll see a significant increase post-COVID at 14.5% to 32.3%. Now, is this where we need it to be? Absolutely not. The educators behind me, those retirees that I see behind me to the right would say, no. We want this percentage to be 100%, but we have to start somewhere, and that starts with the growth of students. So as a group here, you'll see African and American and Hispanic students growing at a significant rate of change, Stephen. And as we look at this next slide, at African-American students, again, 127% rate of change. African-American students, again, seeing a significant hit post-COVID. And you'll see even prior to COVID, students, African-American students, were only achieving at or above grade level, 17% of students, 17% of students. Now nearly 30% of students with 16.5% increase from 2021 to 2023. Stephen, we're going to drill down even farther here, because we know as a board, you want to understand where some of our challenges are with African-American male students who are particularly at risk. And you all know the research around that. You'll see here, look where African-American male students were post-COVID. Only 10% of African-American males across our system were reading at or above grade level. Even if you look prior COVID, 15% of students reading at or above grade level. And now, the most significant rate of change we've seen over the course of the last two years, 153% rate of change for African-American male students from 2021 to 2023. Stephen? If we look at Hispanic students, also another very vulnerable student group, you'll see a similar rate of change here, over 100% rate of change with our multilingual learners, going from 19.5% in 2021 to almost 40% in 2023. Stephen? And again, taking a look at our male students. We know reading for our males, again, we know what best practice says. We know what research tells us about males, their enjoyment of reading, their engagement of reading. You see a significant rate of change, again, here with Hispanic students, male students from pre-COVID, from 23% to post-COVID, now 34%. Stephen? And then, of course, look at our white students. Our white students continue, again, with a significant rate of change over the course of the last two years in particular, outperforming even where they were prior to the pandemic, from 72% in 2017 to 84% now here in 2023. Stephen? I'm just going to pause on the next slide to the members of our audience, so our folks viewing via the internet or YouTube or however they get on. I want you to look, board members, I know many of you have come prepared, so you've seen this slide. But I just want everybody in the room to take a second, look at this data and read the related commentary on this slide. What we see here is if our students continue to grow at the same rate as they have, particularly the last two years, by 2027, isn't it amazing that over 100% of our fifth graders will be reading at or above grade level in 2027? Stephen? And we sustain this through a couple of, I'd like to say easy ways, but they're really, really challenging. We accomplish this by having great leaders, the ones sitting around me, the ones behind me, who always lead out front in front of me. Our focus this year is on that framework that you've, we had a couple of principals talk to you about, Kevin Smith, a few weeks ago, Kane. He talked to you about the instructional framework. Tonight, Joe Williams, seated to my left, is going to talk to you about PLCs, professional learning communities, to make sure you, as board members, understand what those are, what they look like. And three, restorative relationships, strong relationships among adults, strong relationships among adults and kids. Those really are the key, and I think that Mrs. Brew Baker earlier and Mr. White, we're so glad you're here. I'm going to call on you in a minute, so get ready. Would say that those key relationships are ways to build capacity in young learners and that culture and climate, like built through the Ron Clark House System going full circle, are what create sustainable change and climate that is conducive to learning for our students. Also this year, we're taking a focus on chronic absenteeism and student attendance, because when we look at our data, it suggests, I know this is no shock, but it suggests that students that are consistently in school learning do better, learn at higher rates, and they leave our schools more prepared. So we're focused again on that framework, PLCs, building relationships with kids that are healthy, and on reducing chronic absenteeism and truancy. Here are a few things that, on the next slide, Stephen, to which we attribute these monumental gains. The mental health services and wraparound support facilitated by Shavana Coakley and Lisa Allison at the central level, that has been paramount to our success with children. And post-ESTR, Mr. Grabowski, Mr. Calhoun, we're going to have to think at the audit finance about how we maintain that support. Student data reviews at the end of this month. The principals don't know it yet, but you're about to get a memo that at the end of this month, we're going to start back with our student data reviews, looking at what our preliminary data told us about where students are on MAP, SC, map, I-ready right now. So we know as an academic team, as associate superintendents, where we need to go next. Leadership capacity, our work with leading educators with the University of Virginia and leadership support has supported a lot of these gains. Many of the principals behind me have participated in that. Our core curriculum, EL, centered around the science of reading. Our focus on writing has supported these gains. Learning walks and coaching. Today, I called Mrs. Haynes behind me, and I said, "Mrs. Haynes, we're on an ESTR call. Are you able to join us?" She says, "I'm coaching the principal." I said, "Stay right where you are. We'll postpone the meeting." The learning walks that our associate superintendents are leading, again, paramount to leadership development and to student growth. Teacher incentives. In our acceleration school, we have a pilot around performance, and we're looking to see how, if, that makes a positive impact in student achievement. Intervention and specialized services, our letters training led by our literacy team, Mrs. Simmons, our PLCs, supported by our associates, spearheaded by Joe Williams behind me, our curriculum resources, our high-dosis tutoring, we want to thank you for supporting that through SAGA and other means, and our early childhood expansion, championed by the ever-so-great Kim Foxworth. We attribute all of these things to the student success that we've seen. Stephen? So I'm going to ask Mr. White, who I'm going to, we're going to all give a round of applause, because I think he's had a challenging day to come up, and he's going to talk a little bit about, as we go full circle, how improved climate has resulted in the great student achievement gains or the growth we've seen at Morningside, but also the improvement in student climate. Come on up, Mr. White.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am George White, proud interim principal at Morningside Middle School, and I have had the pleasure of having some of you at Morningside to see the excitement that is rolling in our school. We call ourselves the Mighty Mustangs, because we know that they're very hardy and that they're resilient, and we try to instill that with our scholars. Over the last year, we have introduced the house system in Morningside to build up our climate and culture. That in itself has been a game changer in our school, because now we want our scholars to be able to really invest in their school instead of saying that Morningside is just a bad school. No, it's not a bad school. What we want you to do is to really own what Morningside is and believe in yourself. For a while, kids did not believe in themselves. They didn't have the confidence. And we had to build that confidence, not only for our scholars, but also for our teachers. And one thing about the Ron Clark House System is that it helps to build that confidence in their scholars. We visited there last year. We saw the excitement that the scholars were getting from their teachers, from their staff members. When they see that, then the scholars want to be excited too. What is it that they're excited about? And so we wanted to bring that back to Morningside. And so we had to start with our staff. That was the first thing. And getting them acclimated to what was going on in the house system was basically letting them see how they can build relationships with each other, and then how they can transform that to relationships with their scholars. And so once we got that excitement going with our staff, then we knew that it was going to be infectious for our scholars. And so when our scholars came onboard, we were able to introduce them to the house system. They were put into their different houses. We had a wheel spin, a big party, and then those scholars really started to get engaged. They really wanted that excitement in their school. We have various days in which are called house celebration days, which we have zero, zero discipline issues. The scholars are engaged in not only academic competitions, but also just pure fun. We also have community partners that come out with food trucks, they come out with desserts, all that type of stuff to just drum up excitement. And those scholars are earning that time to be able to enjoy the house celebration days, because they have to have zero referrals, they have to be at school on time, and have less than 20, like, for example, I'm going to tell you, we have a house celebration day, which is this Friday, is going to be sponsored by the House of Altruismo. The criteria was that the scholars had to have no referrals for the month of October, and they had to have less than two days of absences. And so those scholars are coming to school. They want to come to school because they want to enjoy their house day. But if those scholars are not there to enjoy the house day, we're still supporting them the best way possible, because we want them to enjoy that as well. So I want also to let you know that this has changed the climate of Morningside Middle School, because our scholars are in class. Our teachers are using the strategies that we have learned from the Ron Clark House System in order to engage scholars in class, keep them in class, and keep them excited. I have an English teacher right now that has basically used this, and this is her first year here. She hasn't even gone to visit Ron Clark in Atlanta, Georgia. But she has embraced it based on how we're presenting it to her, and her climate and her classroom has transformed tremendously. And she wants to learn more. So what we're doing this year is that we're sending all of our teachers that have not visited Ron Clark to Ron Clark Academy so that they will be able to participate and bring that excitement back, because we got to keep fueling it. We've got to make sure that our scholars are engaging in the culture and climate change at Morningside Middle School. Because of that, we have seen growth in Morningside Middle School. We've seen growth with ELA. We've seen growth in our, well, actually decreased in our discipline data. So instead of seeing an average of 30 or 40 referrals a day, we might only see five or six. But we also have learned how to use this opportunity to engage our kids on a level in which we are listening to them. Instead of just going at what we see as a referral, we're listening to them. Because when we have these listening sessions and we're talking to our kids, we're basically taking in all the stuff that they're telling us that before we did not, because they're letting us know that we want to be heard. We want you guys to be able to have as part of what's going on at the school. And because of that, that's why we're starting to see an improvement in how kids feel when they come into the school. And because of that, they're more engaged, and we're seeing kids that are more attentive in the classroom. Our teachers are building excitement. And so I invite each and every one of you to come to Morningside Middle School, come to Morningside Middle School, and spin that wheel so that you could be part of the Han House Clarkson. Okay, I've got the House of River, the Blue House. I've already had some that come in. It's a bendy, and we have some that are the Black House. So I expect you to come to Morningside Middle School and enjoy in the cultural, the change and excitement that we have in Mustang country. Thank you.
Mr. White, Mr. Brody said he doesn't care how good you did. He's still not giving you a slide. I issued him a citation, don't worry.
Anita, could I ask Mr. White a question?
Oh, yes, sir. This is your meeting. Mr. White, come on back up here to the podium. Thank you, sir.
So how long have you been implementing this program?
Pardon?
How long have you been implementing this program?
We are now officially in year two.
Year two?
We're in year two.
And the percentage of scholars versus your general population?
Big word?
The percentage of your scholars versus your general population, I know it's growing.
Mm-hmm. So right now, if you look at, we have about 543 scholars enroll. We have about 43 to 45% of those scholars that are ML scholars, so that's growing. And so with that, that does come up with some challenges, but we take challenges as just a way for us to just try things differently. We have about 23% of our scholars that are served through special ed. And then you've got, so if you look at all that, you've got about 50% of our scholars right now that have some support. But with that, we know that we have the people in place. We just need more support from whatever you can provide for us to continue to grow and continue to flourish with our scholars.
And this goes, this goes to community involvement. I mean, and Ms. Huggins, maybe you can answer this. I mean, how do community members get involved in supporting it?
How do community members get involved?
Like companies and museums.
Okay.
With assets.
Okay, how do we get them involved? Well, we have to go out and make sure that they know what we're doing at Morningside. We want to make sure that they see our kids. You know, I invite them to look at YouTube and see what we're doing. I try to put that on every week. And look at Facebook, look at Instagram. We make phone calls. I have a parent advocate that's involved. We also use our parent advocate that's shared with North Charleston Elementary School and North Charleston High School to drum up support of what's happening in our community. And that's how we're able to get people to come out and support our schools, like Morningside, and particularly in the north area, because our kids deserve it and they need it.
Thank you.
And we're hoping, Mr. Grabowski, by doing this spotlight, that we'll be able to, again, shine a light on the great things going on across our district to be able to garner that community support. I hate to call her out, but Ms. Henderson is in here. And I think that you, Ms. Henderson, I may be wrong, but come on up to the podium. Yeah. You'll be, you'll be real excited about attending the next meeting, won't you? I think you've had the Ron Clark House System probably longer than any school in the district. Am I wrong on that?
That's correct.
And how many years?
We launched in January of 2020.
So could you, could you talk a little bit about the experience at Pinkney? Because it's grown exponentially, and to Mr. Grabowski's point, you've utilized a lot of.
Sure. I was fortunate enough to visit in the summer of 2019 and then spent about a semester gaining faculty support. A team of four staff members went, and we launched in January of 2020. We sorted all of our students into our four houses, sorted our kids into four houses. We were rocking and rolling, and then March of 2020 happened, which kind of put the brakes on. We still tried to use the house system virtually, but then we relaunched in 2021. So we are real excited. Everyone in our building, including our custodial staff and our bus drivers, and our bus drivers get so excited about doing house points. We've brought community members in for things like, we did the, we called the Shipmate Shake. And we had, we put our students through real-world challenges, and they, we had community members, businesses, tried it tech, sent people out to kind of quiz kids on their soft skills, and that was all through the house system, so teaching them those real-life critical thinking skills.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Henderson. We'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
So I was just about to ask you, Ms. Huggins, if that was the conclusion of your presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And now I'll open it up to the board members for questions. And Ms. Roberson, I'll go ahead and start with you.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to Mr. White. My first experience with the house system was when Dr. Temple and I visited Morningside, and I spun the wheel, had no idea what the wheel was like. So then now let me give a shout out to Hunley Park for inviting me, Dr. Gathers and her staff, to visit Ron Clark Academy a couple of weeks ago. to visit Ron Clark Academy a couple of weeks ago. Thank you so much for that experience. Now let me talk to my colleagues. We sit here and we sign off on 250K lists, and we often, we oftentimes wonder about what we're signing off on. I would challenge each of you to look at this list of schools that's participating in the RCA Academy program, link up with your schools. If you don't have one in your district, go and talk to them and take a trip out there. The energy that I experienced in Atlanta was phenomenal. I believe that every teacher should have that experience. Thank you, Hunley Park. Thank you, Morningside. I hope that this is one of the programs that we will be able to sustain. It is necessary. Families are engaged. The community is engaged. Students are engaged. They take ownership of their house. It's important to them. Just the phenomenal accomplishments that come out of this system, it is worthwhile sustaining in Charleston County schools. So please, let us make it a priority, one of our board priorities, to make it our business to visit this academy so that we can support these schools out here. And I look forward to North Charleston Elementary and Morningside, you connecting with North Charleston High School, and continuing that house system so that we can get the data and follow this in other schools. In District Eight, you know, if you're interested, I will support you.
Ms. Roberson. Thank you so much, and thank you for being an active part because without systems like these and positive culture like we've experienced, we would not have the results we have in improved student outcomes. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And Mr. Berori, I did do the slide, the master slide, and I will sign off on Morningside giving that slide.
Ms. Waters.
Um, so one, I want to make some comments about the literacy presentation that we were given, but do also just want to thank you all for the Ron Clark presentation. Really excited about the focus on culture and climate. And although I'm representing Issa Bendy today, I did spin the wheel and get Altruismo at Morningside, so I'm also representing the Black House, the House of Givers at the same time. I do want to go back to the presentation on literacy. And although the improvement has been remarkable, and you all know I, you know, I'm always commending and always boasting about the progress we've made, but you know, I always get a little, you know, a little tinge of frustration when I see District Four, my district, trailing so far behind. Also District 23, so I'm not saying mine is the only one, but District Four is very low. And so we always talk about, you know, closing the achievement gap. And my concern is around the acceleration services, not even just acceleration schools, but the tools that it actually takes to accelerate learning. Because in my areas, it has to be accelerated. It can't just be improving because we have too many kids in that gap of time matriculating, and only 30% of them were reading on grade level. And so I know that, you know, we heavily scrutinize as a board a lot of these tools. The only one that I see that I call out, aside from having, you know, obviously a very strong core curriculum, is the high doses tutoring. And so I'd like someone to speak to the high doses tutoring and how important it is for students in the predicament of being in the lower performing as well as any additional tools that can be used to accelerate student learning.
Thank you for that, Ms. Waters. And so I came forward a few months ago with the package for Saga. And just as luck would have it, I had the opportunity to be at the UVA PLE last week. This is the heart and soul of Jackie Haynes's work, but they really have done a solid job in terms of acceleration services and supporting the work. And so someone from Saga was at the presentation last week, and the crux of the anchor around that high dosage tutoring is, the tutoring is available during the school day. I believe in being able to provide both enrichment, a strong core remediation even when needed during the school day. That's when it's most powerful, if you will. And so students are able to have the benefit of a core curriculum, face-to-face, in-person, live tutor, and when necessary, when appropriate. They also have the benefit of online tutoring. And so I feel like that's where we get the biggest bang for our buck. And in terms of sustainability, because it is an ESSR-funded item, our charge, our task moving forward would be able, being able to sustain it. And so we have to get really serious really soon about which items, which projects, which outfits we will move forward in the next several years to sustain, sustain the success that we've seen. That's going to be really important for us.
Thank you for that. And I'm lifting that up because, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily approach our work as a board strategically. We sort of do a lot of things. But I think it's really important for us to be thinking all the time about what is the body of work that's moving our children forward? And if any of those pieces are gone, what are we going to be left with in terms of progress for our kids? Particularly in District Four, where my kids, if they stop improving, we actually won't meet that projection that you talked about.
For sure. Thank you.
And Ms. Waters, thank you so much, Michelle. We're going to, Ms. Haynes and I discussed today over the course of the next visits to UVA, ask board members to travel with us so you have a collective interest in and buy-in into the work. And so you can see what's going on. You can read about what's happening, and you can compare it to the results that we've gotten because you're right, in order to sustain this. I mean, the rate of change that we've seen here is phenomenal. It's going to take something pretty special to be able to sustain that over the course of the next four to five years. So thank you for acknowledging that.
Mr. Robowski, did you have anything else?
Ms. McGee?
Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah, I asked everything I needed because I was going to get to, what do you need from us to? Like you said, you already mentioned, we need to put the money behind it because we know ESSR is following us. So we have to start looking at creative ways in order to be able to sustain the growth that we have so we can keep moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes. Mr. White, I just want to say I loved your presentation. If I had any more kids in school, I would love for them to go to your school. But looking at this list, I only see two middle schools on this list. What can we do to be able to look at other middle schools in the district to see if this house system would be a good fit for them?
So we, we allow principals to demonstrate that, that decision-making ability. And what we've seen in the case here is it's sort of a feeder pattern. North Charleston up to, as Mrs. Roberson said, up to Morningside, and then maybe potentially on up to North Charleston High School. So, you know, as we are shining a spotlight for you, our board members and our public, we're also going to do these similar things with principals so that they see the results that their colleagues are getting. And we're very fortunate that we have a collaborative group of principals that are focused on student outcomes. They realize that they get some of their best ideas from the peers sitting right alongside them. So a lot of that, Mrs. Bailey, thank you for the question, is just awareness of what's going on and the impact that it's had. So we'll continue to do that internally.
Okay, and I just want to say, over the 16 and a half years that I've spent in Charleston County, when we make school exciting and fun for kids, they want to come to school. They want to learn. They want to be there. And I just want to say thank you for all you do. God bless y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey.
Ms. Temple? Dr. Temple?
All of these reports are very encouraging, I have to say. My own school visits to Morningside and North Charleston Elementary were very exciting. I was so impressed when I went to North Charleston Elementary. It was the last day of school, and all the children were there in the auditorium with their T-shirts on. And the principal just really had to raise her hand, and there was quietness for the students to enjoy their celebration. And it was impressive. I even enjoyed my lunch that was offered by community engagement. One of the catering services had a delicious barbecue dinner. So that, we want to thank those in our community who support our schools because they certainly need it. I was impressed with the list of all the tools that you're using, that chart that showed all the different things that are happening. We have to keep going with that because all of those work together and support the system. I looked at the James Island data, and, you know, I mean, we're doing, we're doing well compared to some of the areas, but we still have 23% of our students who aren't achieving where they need to be. So we have to, you know, think about, you know, what we can do to help, you know, the schools with the tools that they need. And, you know, I just, I love this thought about belonging and the school. I know how important school culture is. So I'm thinking, one of the questions I have is, is the house system also working with restorative practices? It seems to me that a sense of excitement and belonging is important, but then also the students and faculty having opportunities to work through conflict that, that students and faculty might have to build, help build the community.
I'm glad you asked, Dr. Temple. Mrs. Brew Baker, would you like to speak a little to that about the, the connection between restorative practice and improved culture?
Yeah, there's a lot of overlap in both. I have some staff who are trained in restorative practices independently. We are working.
So we have a number of staff who are trained already in restorative practices. They are not necessarily exclusive of one another. A lot of the concepts are overlapping. But we are encouraging, as we are finishing up our letters training as well, that more of our staff will have both pieces of it and that partnership. So there is a place for each element within that, that system.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
I've got a number of questions. I'm going to rapid-fire the match you. First of all, I entirely agree with my colleague, Ms. Roberson. I also visited a school that had Ron Clark Academy, and the energy was just, yeah, it's phenomenal. So I love, I didn't, I'm going to have to go back to that principle, and I don't know. I wasn't offered to spin the wheel. I don't know why. I'm going to have to have a conversation about that one. So a couple of things. One from Ms. Simmons, you mentioned the online tutoring. Do we have any data about how many students take part in that, whether they're numbers or percentages?
A couple of months ago perhaps, we provided a program impact report for Saga in the board brief that described how many students we have interfacing with the program. We have the program at Stahl High School, Burke High School, West Ashley High School. And for the last two and a half years now of ESSR funding, we've been able to serve more than, I want to say, I want to give an inaccurate number off the top of my head. I don't have it in front of me, but I can revisit that with you guys in a board brief for Friday.
Okay, that's one of the things that we have to decide from an ESSR funding standpoint, right?
Right.
Yeah, I thought it was. Okay, on the Ron Clark Academy, do we know how much that costs per school? And is that current, I think someone said it was ESSR-funded currently. If we're rolling that into GOF, do we know what the cost is?
We don't have the updated cost, Mr. Kelly, but we can get that, and we have various funding sources. It's not solely out of ESSR because we've been doing it for a while in some of our schools. But I would, we will definitely get that to you in the board brief as well.
Okay, and the last one is, the very last slide of the brief has that, the boxes of, of basically the things that are, yeah, adding to success.
Yes, sir.
Which items or all in that box need GOF funding or are going to be expiring with ESSR?
So, Mr. Kelly, that is a great question. Almost all of them, to some extent, will expire, again, to some extent with the expiration of ESSR. Most of them are partially funded. Some of them are funded out of GOF. Not all of them are entirely funded out of ESSR, but a significant portion of a lot of them are funded out of ESSR. So again, we have to look at what we're currently doing that's funded out of GOF, what's working. Prioritize from this list what we need to move forward. Because, for example, the UVA PLE work that has really guided a lot of the coaching in our acceleration schools and our new group of transformation schools, a significant portion of that is out of ESSR. So that's what we're doing internally right now with Jackie Carlin and her finance team is identifying what comes out of which pocket and what we need to talk to the audit and finance about strategizing as we plan for the sunset of ESSR. So I don't have a quick answer for you, but it's something that we're looking at internally and certainly can provide.
Okay. I guess as a maybe direct way to ask the same question, are there items in that list? Because I'm looking at this list as like, here's why we're succeeding. Are there items in that list that because of finances, we're going to have to cut?
There will be items. If we don't find another way to prioritize them, yes. The short answer to that is, is yes. A lot of the mental, I hate to say this publicly, but I'm going to, a lot of the mental health services, for example, and looking at Lisa Allison here, so much of that support and that school-based support is funded through ESSR. The increased levels we've been able to provide children, which we know has a direct positive correlation on student achievement. Again, the UVA work, it's not a, Mr. Calhoun and Mr. Grabowski will recall, and even you, the board members will, because I think we talked about it in an open forum. It's not, as my granny would call it, it ain't cheap. But you know, it's not, it's not a cheap line item. So it's something that we're going to have to, to look at, or we will lose it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So thank you for asking.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Wally.
You're welcome. I'm just going to ask one question because a lot of the questions that I have have already been answered with the other board members' questions. But just wanted to tag on to your train of thought at that la, at the end. You mentioned mental health supports that are, could be sunsetting. Is it a possibility, and I know I've asked this before with early learning development, is it possible that we could perhaps partner with other agencies like DSS or something like that for the mental health supports rather than, you know, if we have to cut something out?
It's a really good question, Mrs. Wally. We already are, Mrs. Allison, partnering with a lot of different agencies to help support the work. Mrs. Allison, do you mind, do you mind speaking to some of those real quickly right up here? You can. We are already partnering with some, and we would hope to be able to continue those partnerships as we, as our sun sets. Ms. Allison.
Yes, ma'am. So through our ESSR funding, we've been able to provide support through in-house staffing. So increased number of school psychologists, social workers, mental health and wellness coaches, clinical counselors. And so they've been able to provide immediate support to schools, to students right within their own school environment. We've also been able to increase our contracted services with clinicians who can provide support after hours through telehealth that is more convenient for families in some instances. But we have a number of contracts with our community partners, MUSC, Department of Mental Health, Mindspace. So local, small, large, and we look across our district at our data to see where the best fits for those supports are in conjunction with our hired staff. I hope that answered the question. I'm sorry.
It was perfect. It was perfect. So again, we'll continue to partner, Mrs. Wally, but we'll have to prioritize how we're able to continue post-COVID. You know, again, COVID has resulted in the need for an increased number of school psychologists and the mental health supports in our schools. And so, you know, we have to prioritize human resources as we move forward.
But the, so the partnership she was just talking about, that's funded through ESSR, or we will be able to sustain that?
Some of those are funded through ESSR, but we'll have to prioritize what we're able to continue post-ESSR because of the funding cliff. But we've seen improved student outcomes as a result of these mental health supports. So we know it's priority, and it's going to be on the top of our list.
Great. Thank you all for the questions.
So with that, we will conclude that section and then move on to section number five, Strategic Education Committee. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Carlotta.
Good afternoon. We're going to move on to Strategic Ed 5A Paper and Pencil Assessment Waiver. Ms. Anita?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey, and thank you for working with us on the SEC topic. Mrs. Simmons and Buffy Roberts are going to talk a little bit about paper and pencil assessment waiver, followed by an overview. You've asked multiple times that, for us to tell you a little bit about special ed services in the district, we're going to share that with you. And then Dr. Williams will wrap up the SEC portion, Mrs. Bailey, for you, talking about professional learning communities. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Simmons.
Ms. Roberts is prepared to discuss the waiver. This is an annual request that we make for a particular set of schools requesting to use paper pencil for our state assessment versus the online tool. So, Ms. Roberts, please take it away.
Yes, thank you for allowing us to talk a little bit about the assessment waiver. So annually, we do submit to our board of trustees a request to allow our schools to be able to administer SEA via paper pencil rather than online. We have about 17 schools. We have about seventeen schools who've actually made that request. So the majority of our schools actually would be um administering online. But there are some schools that aren't yet ready or feel comfortable um doing that. So that's why we brought this waiver to you so that we could submit it to our State Department. Any questions about um the schools or?
Yeah, I um, I I have no objection to it, of course, but but can you tell us why the waiver would be required? I mean, you said they're not comfortable with it. Can you quantify that a little bit?
Um, there are different reasons why a school might um determine that they're not um ready for all of their students to um actually move to online. Some of that might have to do with, um, sometimes when you have too many students who who actually start that assessment at the same time, it could cause some kind of connectivity issues. We work with our IT department to make sure that there um is plenty of bandwidth. That's not an issue. As a matter of fact, they've increased all of that. But schools might would have to have a staggered start or something along those lines. So they just feel more comfortable with um doing that paper pencil rather than um moving to the online right now.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
I have a question. Um, for some of these schools, um, do they have, the ones that are requesting the weavers, do they have a lot of students that have English as a second language? And they would need more time to be able to comprehend what the test, the material actually is going over?
Some schools may feel like um paper pencil works better for their students. That is um a part of that discussion process. But that would not be the only um reason for requesting online, I mean, excuse me, paper pencil versus online.
Okay. Any other questions? No? We're going to move on to five.
We're going to make a motion?
Oh, motion to, oh, I'm sorry, motion to advance to the October twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three board meeting for consideration to approve the SCDE waiver for assessments.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Calhoun moves and Ms. Wally second. The motion passes. Now we can move on to item five B, overview of the Department of Exceptional Children.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, for, um, the last few meetings are so special education as a topic has emerged. And we wanted to provide a high-level overview. I regret that Mr. Grabowski isn't here to hear it. Perhaps he will listen um later on at his convenience, but.
He wasn't feeling.
I know, I know. I wish him well. But our executive director, our executive director for the Department of Exceptional Children, Ms. Pilkey, will lead us in this presentation.
Thank you so much, Ms. Simmons. Good afternoon, Ms. Wally, Ms. Bailey, our Board of Trustees members. It is my honor and pleasure this afternoon to provide for you an high-level overview of the work of the Department of Exceptional Children. So we'll get to the next slide. Mr. Wyatt, can we advance to the next slide? If we can go back just a couple, please. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Wyatt. In this one, you'll see that the Charleston County School District Department of Exceptional Children, we serve students aged with disabilities, ages three through twenty-one. We are work in support of those schools, families, and in compliance with two very important laws. The first one of those is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, also known as IDEA, and then Section five oh four, the Rehabilitation Act. IDEA is a law that makes available a free, appropriate public education to eligible children with disabilities throughout the United States and ensures that special education and related services are provided. Section five oh four is a civil rights law that protects individuals with disabilities from discrimination, requires schools to provide accommodations if needed for a student with a disability across the general education environment. Students who are found eligible by a group of individuals, including the parent and guardian, have a disability that substantially limits one or more life functions, may require a five oh four accommodations plan. Currently in CCSD, about four point one percent of our total student enrollment, uh, two thousand one hundred and forty-nine students have a five oh four accommodations plan. Generally, our students who are found eligible under the IDEA are also covered by Section five oh four, which protects the student from disability-based discrimination. Students who are found eligible by a multidisciplinary team, again, including the parents and guardians as critical team members, they may be eligible for for special education services on or related services. And they may require an IEP, an individualized education program, if the student is enrolled in a public school or an individualized services program, plan, or an ISP if that student is parentally placed in a private or a homeschool setting. And we currently serve about ten point eight percent of our total student enrollment or five thousand five hundred and fourteen students with an IEP or an ISP. You see here the mission statement for the Department of Exceptional Children. And the mission of our department is to design, deliver, and implement the services and supports that our students with disabilities need in order to be prepared for what comes next, whether that is college, career, or the ability to become an independent adult to the greatest extent possible. We work to accomplish our mission through a couple of really key beliefs for us. One of those is that all students with a disability are general education students first. You will hear us use person-first language. We feel like it's really important that we focus on the child, the individual student before we look at the disability for the student. And then also that special education is a service, not a place. We know that special education is specially designed instruction that's individualized to meet the needs of the student so that, to the greatest degree possible, the student can make meaningful educational progress, be involved in and progress in the general education environment, and be educated and participate with their non-disabled peers. Under IDEA, and that's where we'll spend most of our time today, talking about the students who are served with an individualized education program. We know that we have to look at eligibility for children before we look at the delivery of specialized services. And there are some key tenants around eligibility under the IDEA. The first of those that you'll see there references Childfind. Childfind is an obligation that every school district has in order to provide free screening for students ages three through twenty-one who are eligible to attend public schools or private schools, who are homeschooled, or those who may be homeless or wards of the state. The second tenant there is parental consent. Before we can progress to an evaluation for a student, we must have written parent consent from uh the parents or the guardians. The next item is protection and evaluation. When we look at protection and evaluation, that means that the evaluation must be comprehensive so that there is no one measure that would determine eligibility for the student. Must be conducted by trained evaluators, such as our school psychologist in the Department of Student Support Services, that it must be nondiscriminatory and administered in the student's native language. And the South Carolina Department of Education Standards for Evaluation and Eligibility Determination, affectionately known as the SEED document, outline the evaluation process and the eligibility criteria for the thirteen eligibility criteria that are established under the IDEA. And you'll see here that it's not just about the evaluation for the student, but there are several key questions that that multidisciplinary team, including the parent and guardian, must answer to determine if that child needs to move forward for services and have an IEP or an ISP. And that is, first of all, does that student have a disability that meets the criteria that are outlined under IDEA? The second, does that disability have an adverse effect, an impact on that student's educational performance? And then lastly, as a result of the disability, does that child require specially designed instruction in order to receive that free and appropriate public education? So now that we know a little bit about the eligibility process, let's take a look about our students in CCSD, our students with disabilities ages three through twenty-one. So what you'll see there is an indication of our child count over time. So you'll see that the numbers increase from twenty fifteen until the current date. This current date is a snapshot for us. Our annual child count will actually occur later on this month. While we've seen that increase over time in the number of students identified, in CCSD, we average between ten and eleven percent of our total student population being identified as a student with a disability under IDEA. Interesting to note that um we are below the South Carolina average at fourteen percent right now and nationally at fifteen percent. Just something to comment, I think that is interesting with that, is that for many years in uh across our country, thirteen percent of the overall student population was typically identified under IDEA. Since twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, we've seen that increase to fifteen percent nationally. And then when we look at those thirteen eligibility criteria under IDEA, we are match match the nation in terms of having those highest disability numbers in the categories of specific learning disabilities, students with autism, or students who may have an other health impairment. The next slide here shows some information about the percentage of students served under IDEA in relationship to the overall enrollment of students by race and ethnicity. This chart also compares the percentage of the total student enrollment by group based on race and ethnicity in CCSD to the latest national averages based on the National Center for Educational Statistics, and that data is from twenty-one, twenty-two. While we've seen a decrease of seven percent in the number of students with disabilities who are Black, African-American over the last seven years, we recognize that we're not where we want to be in terms of disproportionate representation among our students based on race and ethnicity. We truly believe that your support of CCSD's commitment to early interventions, there are early childhood programming, to rigorous grade-level instruction in mathematics and literacy, particularly literacy based on the science of reading, and consideration of the whole child through initiatives such as restorative practices, restorative practices which address community building and respectful relationships are steps in the right direction. Also, there are ongoing collaborative efforts between the Department of Student Support Services, School of Psychologists, and the Department of Exceptional Children to ensure protections and evaluation and alignment to the South Carolina Standards for Evaluation and Eligibility Determination. So once we know who our students are, we have to think about the ways that we are supporting our students through uh our classroom teachers, paraprofessionals. And we have to make sure that our students are receiving those appropriate special education and related special education services in accordance with their IEPs. In CCSD, currently, we employ almost five hundred special education teachers. Those are teachers who are not only school-based and in classrooms in schools, but also itinerant teachers as well. We also have related services providers such as speech therapists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, teachers of the deaf and visually impaired, among other categories, who are supporting students in our classroom. Special education support positions include positions such as behavior specialist, special education therapist, our transition specialist, and interpretation and transition, excuse me, interpretation and translation specialist who work with support at the Department of Exceptional Children. Our paraprofessionals include not only our classroom paraprofessionals, or those who may be working with students individually, but also our job coaches who are supporting our high school students with disabilities as they transition into career. And then we have supports at the district level who are supporting all schools. Those include instructional specialists who provide coaching, training, and support for special educators in terms of instructional programming and instructional strategies. Special education coordinators, who serve about fourteen schools each, who provide support to teachers, administrators, and families as well regarding IEP development and then implementation, and then central leadership. So working alongside Ms. Lakeia Drayton, who is our Assistant Director of Behavioral Support and Intervention, Ms. Elizabeth Young, who supports Special Education Support Services, including working with our families of students who have a five oh four accommodations plan, Ms. Sherry Bell, who's our Assistant Executive Director, and then myself. And we support all schools and families and work with the State Department of Education as well as outside agencies. When we think about services for students, we also think about that in the least restrictive environment. You may hear sometimes the term that refers to LRE for students. Under IDEA, students should only be removed from the general education setting when the IEP team has determined that the nature and the severity of the student's disability precludes core instruction in the general education environment, even with the support of supplementary services and aids. Student performance below grade level level is not sufficient enough to remove a student from the general education environment. Because part of what we know is that when we remove students from the core instruction, then sometimes that gap tends to widen because students do not have opportunity and access to the general education standards and instruction. And we know that the purpose of specially designed instruction in special education is to ensure that we are providing our students with the skills they need to access that general education content. As you can see from the chart here, it looks at that what we refer to as LREA, B, and C. LREA is those students who are spending eighty percent or more of their day in the general education environment. Students in LREA B are spending between seventy-nine percent and forty percent of the day in general ed. And then our students in LREC are spending less than forty percent of their day in the general education environment. And so you'll see the progress that we have been making as a school district in terms of our students with disabilities spending more time in the general education environment. Least restrictive, least restrictive environment is something that we think of as a continuum. But it's always important to remember that the most appropriate, least restrictive environment for one child might not be the same for all others. And you'll see here that most recently for our school-aged students who are five years old in kindergarten up through age twenty-one, that sixty-five percent of our students with disabilities spend eighty percent or more of their day in the general education classroom. And we have been able to see clear connections between that amount of time in the general education environment and then those academic outcomes for our students with disabilities. We just spent a moment talking about least restrictive environment, and I want to talk about one of the strategies that we are implementing with our students with disabilities and to help provide an inclusive environment for them, to give our students those opportunities to access the general education curriculum and the skills to be able to do so. And so one of those strategies is the implementation of the co-teaching instructional model at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. The implementation of the elementary school became a focus area for our department a little over two years ago. Co-teaching occurs when you have two teachers. You have a special educator and a general ed. Co-teaching occurs when you have two teachers. You have a special educator and a general ed teacher in the same classroom, and they are working with students. They are planning together. They are instructing together and assessing the students together. There are multiple models of co-teaching that might start off with a one teach, one assist. But what we hope to see over the progression of time is that you walk into the classroom and you cannot tell who is the general education teacher and who is the special education teacher because they are both active participants and leaders of the instruction in the classroom. So we provided professional development in the development of those co-teaching pairs for our general education and special education teachers, for school-based instructional coaches, and for administrators as we work toward ensuring that we are implementing co-teaching models with integrity. You've seen this data before. You recall from the presentation that Ms. Simmons made just a few weeks ago that C C S D has reached new levels of achievement on S C Ready. And our students with disabilities have also experienced exceptional gains based on the dedication, commitment, and support of their teachers, principals, and their families. There are two representations of these improved outcomes on the slides that you'll see here. One of those is in green, and that is the percent of students with disabilities who are meeting already the proficiency level. So they are at that meets and exceeds level on S C Ready. But then we also wanted to show the movement toward proficiency that we're seeing for our students with disabilities. And so you'll see that blue bar represents those students who have moved out of that does not meet category on S C Ready E L A into approaches, meets, and exceeds. And what we're seeing there is that we have a seventy nine point five percent rate of change between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty three. The key point about this data is that our schools are seeing results in decreasing that percentage of students who are not meeting standards for their grade level. And we definitely see that that even increases to forty seven point nine percent when we look at those students who are spending eighty percent or more of their day in the general education environment. So that's E L A. Now looking at math, the same sort of representation in terms of the data, the percent of change for our students with disabilities in math is not as significant as what we have seen in E L A in terms of being at four percent right now. So but this means that we have seen fourteen point three percent meets and exceeds in thirty seven point one. That's for our E L A and the approaches and above categories. So we're not quite at that same level in mathematics. It's one of the reasons why that is a goal for our department this year in terms of looking at an in-depth analysis and alignment to our evidence-based programs and our core math instruction with bridges and illustrative math, thinking about ways to support our special education teachers in learning more about the core curriculum, being more familiar with the O G A P strategies that I know you've heard about a few weeks ago as well. And then thinking about how we encourage that co-teaching model so that our special educators who are truly experts in differentiation and instructional strategies are learning more about the expectations and proficiency required through state standards. And then just a glance at some of the work that we do in supporting our teachers and schools in terms of professional development. So we sponsored a Department of Exceptional Children Summer Summit this year, July thirty first through August the second. So you'll see some photos there. Mr. Chris Singleton was our keynote and talked with us about how every connection matters. We also had participants who attended a range of sessions, some of those that were curriculum-specific. Others were working with the Center for Applied Science Technology on universal design for learning or self-regulation strategies for students. We also had sessions that were really popular among our paraprofessionals who are supporting in schools, learning about the roles and responsibilities of a special education paraprofessional, or learning about strategies for working with students with autism. In July and August, we also sponsored a full day of onboarding activities for special educators who were new to C C S D to introduce them to our school district, some of the things that we may do a little bit differently here from other states where they may have been special educators before. And then also to introduce them to our department team members who provide an additional layer of support for them in addition to what they already receive from their instructional coaches at their school and then their administrators. And then the other photos are from our beginning of the year back-to-school professional development in terms of working with Mr. Joe Beckman. He was our keynote speaker. And then sessions that were provided throughout the day that were led by our staff. And as we come to an end, you've heard me talk about in the eligibility process, the critical importance of the role of the parent or guardian. And one of the things that is important about our department is to ensure that parents, guardians have meaningful participation in the education of their students. And so just some things here where we've been fortunate in the past to partner with some community agencies such as the Family Resource Center for Disability and Special Needs, Charleston Akia Stamos, where the Facebook Live session, also with the E three Parent Fest presentation. And then also working with other departments within C C S D. So partnering with the Department of Early Learning with their symposium, also working with our Department of Federal Programs and their Abrazos program. So there's a photo from that as well. And then Department of School Support and Family and Community Engagement with some Facebook Live sessions. So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit of the work that the Department of Exceptional Children does here in Charleston County School District.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the floor for any questions. Anybody? Ms. Robison?
I just have one basic question. This is the broad category of disabilities. So there are many disabilities. So my question is for the percentages. I'm sure whoever pulled the data, you have it broken down where you know which categories you got the increasing?
Yes. In terms of what we see right now is that our largest categories of disability are our students with a specific learning disability, students with autism, students with an other health impairment. Interesting to note that our students with autism category has been one of our fastest-growing categories of eligibility.
How do you, does your department, do you have everything you need? And if not, how can we better support you?
I think we are very fortunate. We're very blessed to be able to provide teachers with a low caseload ratio. So we are far below the state level in that in terms of being able to provide that kind of support. It is an ongoing process each year to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students. I may be a little bit biased, but I believe that our exceptional educators are some of the most dedicated, hardworking, loving individuals that you will ever find anywhere.
Is there a liaison from your department for the teachers that are with our Department of Special? Is there somebody that can communicate from them to us about how we can better support them as well?
We actually are in the process right now of forming a special educator recruitment and retention task force. And so one of the things that we will be doing in the process there is collecting some feedback, doing some surveys, meeting with some stakeholder groups about what it is that first of all brings them to the profession and then what will keep them in the profession. And so that's probably some things that we can provide updates on as we move forward in that process.
Thank you for being able to interpret what I was trying to ask. Yes, more information from them would be great about what their needs are and how we can help. And that's all.
Yeah. How often do we do the crash courses in special education for our parents?
We've been doing that annually along with the Family Resource Center with Disabilities and Special Needs. We've tried different modes over the last few years with the advent of COVID. We were able to do some of those sessions via Zoom. We have done those also in person. We would love to see them be better attended than what we have had in the past, but certainly that's something that we want to continue to do. They're a tremendous resource from the community, providing lots of guidance for our parents, helping our parents be mentors and advocates for their children.
All right. We've been hitting, excuse me, we've been hitting each district correctly, like from one all the way down to nine?
In the past, we have tried to do those in strategic locations around the district. Our session that was most recently held last spring was held at the Cooper River Center for Advanced Studies right there across from North Charleston High School.
And my last question, what do you believe led to the gains in S C Ready for our exceptional students?
I think there are several things for that. I do think that it's really truly looking at that alignment to core curriculum, ensuring that our students have that opportunity and that access, that looking at special education as a supplemental support for our students when they're in the general education environment, trying to look very closely at what the typical learner profile is. So in other words, if we have a student who has a deficit in comprehension, they have very different needs than a student who's still learning those foundational skills, who's still at a decoding level, and really trying to look at how we match the appropriate intervention and support to the needs of the students. I think that increase in our students who are spending more time in the general education environment also has a connection with that.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to give tribute to the special education teachers because it's really hard work. It's, and it's hard work as well. I just had a question. The range of services goes from age three to twenty one. So I know at the early ages, we have early childhood, but what happens? What are you all doing for the students that are eighteen to twenty one? Because that, as a, as a family member who knows what it's like to have someone in that age range as a parent, grandparent, aunt, you get a little bit nervous about what's going to happen to them when they're twenty one. How do they transition to, you know, being able to support themselves? So what are we doing for that age group?
So as a student progresses to that age, we are looking at what their transition plans are, what are their plans after high school, after they have completed their studies at age twenty one. We have transition specialists who are also working in support of the schools, looking at assessments for students to determine what are their interests, what are their needs. We partner with some wonderful community agencies as well. The South Carolina Department of Vocational Rehabilitation comes in and helps provide support in our schools, working with individual students. It's always looking at what are the needs of that particular child based on what their plans are, ensuring that they're ready for what comes after us. So it's truly looking at the individual student, looking at whether or not we have community-based instruction opportunities for them, whether they are engaged in some work-based learning opportunities where they're actually going out into the workforce, completing an internship. It all depends on what the needs are of the individual student.
So is there monitoring of the students? I mean, some of them do graduate at age eighteen. So is there monitoring of the students until age twenty one? Or does that just, parents are just in charge or what happens?
Once they exit our, our schools, then they are essentially exited from special education services. We do have indicators that are reported back to the State Department of Ed, looking at those post-secondary outcomes for students. And so there's actually a survey that goes out to the families, and we will get that feedback from the State Department of Education telling us about what their post-secondary experiences have looked like.
And then the other area that I was interested in is parent support because I know that that is an area, if you have a child who has special needs, parents often need support and they need to know how to help their child. So what does our parent support system look like?
Well, part of that is a parent education series, and that may be working with some of our community partners, the Family Resource Center for Disability and Special Needs that we mentioned earlier. Also, the work that the leadership team of our department, as well as the work that our coordinators do many times, is in conjunction with families attending I E P meetings or five oh four meetings to be that additional voice of support. Sometimes it's helping to translate. So much of what we do in education is speaking in acronyms and speaking in various terms that may not be familiar. And so our part is always to ensure that that parent does have meaningful participation in the education of their child. And whether that is sometimes pausing and stopping and saying, let's, let's talk a little bit about what this means. And do we have a clear understanding of that? That's also our commitment to ensure that parents are receiving communication about their child's special education services in their native language as well.
So are there parent advocates to help with the special ed population?
We do not have parent advocates in our department. We do have parents who may have an outside advocate with whom they work or are working with the Family Resource Center with parent mentors as they are referred to there. But we do not have parent advocates per se in the Department of Exceptional Children. Again, lots of times the roles that our coordinators and then the leadership team plays is, is serving in that role with parents to ensure that they understand what the needs are of the child. How can we best meet and support those needs?
Thank you.
Good evening. On, on slide seven, that was the one with the, the percentage of students in, in our schools versus nationally. Do, do you have any idea as to why there's fewer students in the exceptional education department in our schools than nationally? And the heart behind the question is I want to make sure that we're not missing students that, that do need support. We're just not catching them.
I understand definitely in terms of looking at that. You know, we take referrals and consideration for screening and evaluation from parents. We also, once a student is school age, many times that comes through our M T S S teams in our schools conducting individualized problem solving, looking at the interventions of support for students. I think it's really important then when we think about that eligibility determination that we're also being really conscious of what are those factors that we must consider that are, in our language, we refer to as rule-out factors. So thinking about, you know, is it a lack of instruction for that student? Which may be in the case when we have students who are highly mobile, moving from one school to another. We also have to consider language. Is it a limited English proficiency? Is there a cultural difference? And then we have to look at those environmental and economic factors. Environmental factors may be things such as a tragedy in the household, a death of a family member. It's for sometimes it's our students who maybe have so many responsibilities within the home, outside of the school and school day, that does that then somehow impact? And then when we think about, of course, our economic factors, we think about the access that a student may or may not have to appropriate instructional materials, to healthcare in some cases. I think that's been a concern as we are hopefully becoming post-COVID to think about what have been the impacts of our youngest students. So I do think that teams have that responsibility when they are looking at the eligibility to also make sure that we are not overly identifying students based on those factors that we should consider as, as rule-outs.
Very well. Thank you. The, the last question is on, I think it was ten and eleven. The, it was the S C Ready meets expectations. Is the same expectation for the general ed as it is for the exceptional learner? Or is there a different scale that they're meeting?
That's a great question. For the students that you see represented on those two slides, those are our students who have the same expectation. They're all taking the same South Carolina Ready E L A or math assessment. So that is based on grade level standards. Again, another key, critical point for the importance of co-teaching, for the importance of students having access and opportunity with general education. for the importance of students having access and opportunity with general education. We do have students who are served in our low incidence programs who participate in the South Carolina Alternate Assessment. So that one is still scored on a one to four scale, but it is based on the South Carolina Alternate Standards. And so it does not have the, the same kind of criteria that we would see with an SC Ready assessment.
Wow. Well, thank you for that. The slide 11 and 12 packs a new punch, understanding that that's the, the same standard as the general ed peers. So you're clearly doing a wonderful work.
We are very blessed to work with some really incredible teachers, administrators, and have families who are committed to seeing their students be successful.
Certainly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Bailey, can I, one more thing? I know Mr. Grabowski has raised the issue a lot, so he gets a lot of recognition for this being a key issue for him. But it's also for me, I personally have impacted, been impacted and with a couple of people in my family. So I do find them exceptional, actually. So I just wanted to extend the invitation to the teachers of these children, as well as the parents of these children. I intimately understand the challenges from birth until even adulthood with it. So if, if they need anything, just know that you can please reach out and email me about what needs you have. And I'm more than happy to be a assistance.
Thank you.
My question is, I got a chance to go to Lamb's Elementary and toured their early head start, head start in their main building. And I got a chance to go to their pick class. And my question is, from each school, what is the determining factor for allocations for special needs or, or pick classes?
So when we are looking at our pick classes, those are serving our smallest little friends, as our preschool coordinator refers to them, our three and our four-year-old students. So those students would also have been found eligible for services under IDEA. Three-year-old students typically are spending a half day in the program, whereas four-year-olds, they are there for a full day. And we really work closely with the Department of Early Learning, trying to provide inclusive environments for them as well. When we look at the staffing in our preschool intervention classes, our pick classes, one teacher, typically two assistants. We try not to have more than 10 students per session, just because of the needs of the students in the classroom. And, and that can vary from school to school.
And I think there's one more question I had. In the upper grades, do we have students that have like an aide if they are special needs? I know they have the teacher in the classroom and a paraprofessional, but a lot of them or some of them have like an aide that's specifically assigned to that student to help?
We have what we refer to as additional educational assistance, adult assistance for some students who may require that level of assistance, depending on a variety of needs. It can be based on the, the health needs of a particular student. It might be a, a safety need for a student. And so there is an evaluation process that is engaged again with the IEP team and the parent and the student in terms of looking at, is there a need for that service? So we refer to the additional educational assistance as a service that students receive.
Okay. And just for FYI for the parents and other concerned citizens, even though you don't have a parent advocate in your specific unit, they can still speak to the parent at the school as well as the guidance counselor to get the help that they need and the resources and tools that they need for each individual child?
Yes, and we encourage any parent who has questions and concerns. Obviously, first of all, talking with your child's case manager, who is often the special education teacher. In some cases, that may be a related service provider, such as a speech language pathologist. And then also you feel free to contact the Department of Exceptional Children. Again, we have team members who are working in support of students, schools and families. And so we'll be glad to make some of those connections as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And because this is an informational piece, we don't have a motion on the floor for this. So the next item is five C, strategic priority to professional learning community.
Great day to you all. How are you? I'm going to apologize beforehand. You're not going to get my usual energy because I scheduled two of those visits that Anita spoke about earlier in two of my schools. And while they're very fruitful, they're very exhausting. But thank you all so much for giving us an opportunity to briefly go over PLCs here in CCSD. Next slide, please. First and foremost, we want to apologize because in education, for some reason, we make up a lot of acronyms that we sometimes forget ourselves. So I also want to say to you and tell you what the letters PLC stand for. So they stand for, as you can see at the bottom, professional learning communities. And as referenced on the first, uh, first slide, this is a time for our teachers, our administrators and our school-based coaches to sit down, to collaborate and plan using data to improve scholar outcomes. So people may ask, is this something new? And I remember many, many moons ago, we had something called TCTs, yet another acronym, right? And those were referred to as teacher curriculum teams. But as you can see from this table, while there are some similarities between our PLCs and our TCTs, with our PLCs, we see some really added benefits. So as you can see, as it relates to planning, TCTs and PLCs had a planning piece to them. Using data, yes, we use them with our TCTs and with our PLCs. Unpacking standards, absolutely use them with our TCTs and PLCs. But where we start to see a difference is when we're unpacking the standards with our PLCs, we're identifying what scholars should know and show. And that's something really different from what we did with our TCTs. The next thing that we see that's different is, is specific in identifying the learning gaps. We don't have to wonder, our guests, why our scholars are struggling. We know specifically what we need to address and help them. The final thing that we see that's a major difference is planning for scholar responses. Before teachers go into the classroom, they're actually thinking through how scholars are going to respond, who are further off, who are close, who are, who may not get the information at all. Next slide, please. Alrighty, so many may ask us, you know, what's your plan, you know, moving forward with PLCs? But we want to give you our history as it relates to our PLCs. So we started back in 21, 22. We had about 20 pilot schools that participated in what we call a year-long intensive PLC training with Relay. That's the company we utilize. When we got to 22, 23, we dropped down to 16 schools. And the reason why we dropped down is because we wanted to make sure that schools had the bandwidth and were committed. And with a lot of different initiatives, some schools decided, you know what? Maybe we should just focus on what we're doing and we'll, you know, get to the PLC pieces later. The second year we participated, we actually, uh, we actually partnered with Tamika Royal, who worked with Relay, because it was a lot more fiscally responsible. I know you all appreciate that. And she's just a top-notch presenter and really gave us what we needed as it relates to the training. Presently, what we did this summer, and Dr. Temple was a part of that training, is we had two days of training with our principals. They each had to attend one day and we had two-hour sessions where we kind of had the surface-level training as it relates to PLCs, more specifically, the planning and the DDI pieces. In September, we had our schools, and these are non-pilot schools, by the way. These are schools that did not participate in that two-year cohort. They participated in that second, uh, layer of training, which was a lot of over-the-shoulder coaching and some examples by Ms. Royal. A lot of them are in the audience, and I'm pretty sure they can attest to how wonderful it was. Right now, what we're looking at is office hours, starting this month. And in November, that gives schools about 45 minutes to kind of go with, uh, go to Ms. Royal with any questions or concerns they may have as it relates to the process. And for the future, we're looking at additional office hours as needed. Also, development of whole schools. Some of our principals are here today to speak to specifically the DDI and planning pieces, but just some schools that other schools can visit more, specifically those schools that actually went through the training this summer and this year, because the other ones had some more intensive training, and also training for our new leaders that entered the system. And we're training our principals and our school coaches to turnkey at the building for our teachers, by the way. All right, so I'm going to introduce two of our great leaders who do a wonderful job with the PLC processes. And they're going to dive a little bit deeper, like I said earlier, into the planning and DDI pieces we have with us this evening. We have Principal Brendan Glaze from Deer Park Middle, who's going to talk about the planning pieces. And we also have Principal Jackie Rau from Camp Road Middle School, who's going to talk about the data-driven instruction, I said DDI, and give you another acronym to remember, the data-driven instruction, DDI pieces.
Good afternoon. I would like to first talk about the planning piece of the PLC process. And so one of the main components of it is sitting down as instructional, an instructional team. We sit down, myself, my APs, my instructional coaches, along with teachers. And the first thing is collaboration. You know, we sit down at this table together and it's not, you know, a gotcha moment. It's a, you know, collaborative thing that we want to make sure that every student gets what they need. And so we first start off with unpacking the standard. And we really look at that standard that's most aligned with the, the rigor aspect of what we want students to be able to know and show. And we, we write it out and we all come to the table with our pieces of it to be able to see conceptually what students should know from it, but also procedurally what they should be able to show from that. We look at vocabulary, we look at prior knowledge, we look at the things that students should be able to show once they have completed these items. And then we move on to looking at where that key lesson that is more aligned with that standard. And so that key lesson, we're looking at, you know, is it something, you know, in the middle? Is it something that we know is going to be crucial for their development? Going towards like SC Ready, going towards those elements within that unit they need to be successful with. And so from that, the teachers sit down, you know, with us and we all look at, you know, a key problem or some type of task. It can be a formative assessment quiz, something that really speaks to the knowledge and the rigor level of that standard, so that they're able to, you know, work through and see what students should be able to show at the completion of this lesson. And it's, we're sitting around at this table, you know, three, four people sitting at a table at a time. And we're looking at, you know, how do we work this problem out? How do we solve this problem? How do we, you know, craft this response, whether it's text-dependent analysis within English Language Arts? That's what we're looking for. Then from that, you know, we kind of formulate, where are students going to have some pitfalls? You know, we look at, you know, the types of gaps that the students may, you know, have. We look at, you know, their knowledge, and that's teacher knowledge, that's knowledge of students and also content knowledge. And we're looking to figure out, you know, what gaps, you know, where, you know, how many of our kids are almost there? How many, you know, would, you know, need a lot more support to be able to figure those elements out? Then we sit down and we actually think about some of the responses in which we're actually going to work, you know, as a team together to try to figure out, how do we support students with this work? And then lastly, you know, as administration, instructional coaches, and maybe even other partners, how we're going to go in and actually observe these classrooms to figure out, you know, let's see how our work is, you know, playing out, like, is our work beneficial? Are we seeing the fruit of our labor at that point? And then that's where I turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Principal Rau.
Thank you. Um, if we could go to the next slide. So the planning part of the PLC process is exceptionally important. As Principal Glaze explained, without that process, this second part, the data, the DDI part, the data-driven instruction part would not be possible. But this part brings us full circle in really looking at what students are able to do. And so during the planning process, we looked at what they should know and what they should be able to show us to, so that we understand what they know. This part is us bringing that back to the table in our PLC group. Again, at Camp Road, we use small groups as well, so it's usually about four or five people around the table at most. And we take a look at student samples of work. So the teachers will bring the work, the student work back to the PLC group. They'll have it sorted into three categories. They'll have a mastered, somewhat mastered, and unmastered. And then we'll start to look at trends in that student work, which will lead us to creating a gap statement. And that gap statement is us looking at, what is that the biggest trend? What is the biggest bang for our buck? And we go back to the no-show chart that Mr. Glaze talked about. And we look at, we'll write a statement that says, students are unable to do X because they do not yet know Y. And from there, we start to look at how to reteach that. So if students are unable to master this standard because they don't know X, or they, they can't, they're not mastering it because of X, because they don't know Y, how do we reteach them that Y piece, right? And so then we plan that reteach together. We look at what's the percentage of students that are unmastering it? Is it a very large percentage? Will we do a whole group reteach? Will we do a small group reteach because there's a smaller percentage of students? Will that be guided instruction or will it be a modeling? So we have all of those conversations during this, during this time. The really powerful piece with the DDI meeting is after we've decided what that reteach will look like, we give the teachers an opportunity to practice it. Because then we can give each other feedback as educators, right? So the teachers will say out loud what they would say to their kids. And then some, you know, another teacher might say, well, you forgot this piece. Maybe we should also talk about this. And so that allows them to really dig deep into the work of how to make sure our students are mastering that standard. And then again, there's the follow-up piece. So that follow-up can look different depending on the need of the group of teachers. It could be that they want an administrator to come in and observe the lesson and give feedback at that point. It might be a variety of things. And so that is the process in a nutshell.
Next slide, please. And I think the one thing that I'd like to ask, first of all, I would like to clarify that this was intentional, that I invited the two of them because they're both second-year principals. And this is just speaking to the quality of leaders that we're developing here in CCSD. So thank you all so much. Round of applause for them. Very courageous in coming up here to speak before the board. The second thing I'd like to ask them honestly, how they feel about the PLC processes that they're utilizing in their buildings and what they think has happened to, oh, how, how it has impacted, I should say, scholar outcomes?
Do you want to start? Okay. So we started the PLC process last year and we, it's a, it's a slow process to get teachers on board with. But we've really gotten some traction with it at the end of last year and the start of this year. And I think the biggest impact that it's had at our school is the level of rigor that we're seeing in our classrooms when, when we're digging into those standards. We're really able to look at, are we teaching the standard to the level that the students need to be taught at? Are we assessing the standard at that same level? And are our kids successful? And I say that this is a slow process because it takes time to go through this process. So we haven't even gone through all of the standards yet, but our goal is to just keep plugging along so that eventually we've gone through every standard and every content area. And we've really looked at the level of rigor that needs to be happening in the classrooms and assessing our students at that level of rigor. And the goal is that if we're, if we're having high expectations for all students and we're giving them rigorous instruction, that we should see increased achievement.
So to piggyback on all of that that Principal Rau stated, what we have seen at Deer Park, you know, as teachers are working through this process, you know, even, even knowing that they are also the content expert, they're even having aha moments. And it's, and it's powerful because going through this entire process, teachers are realizing where they need improvement. We are also realizing as instructional leaders, like, you know what? From this information, I can best support you in the classroom, providing you different resources that you may need to be successful. We also have that prime opportunity to really dive down into the curriculum and really pick out those pieces that are, again, supporting our teachers doing that work in the classroom. It's, it's powerful. It is a heavy lift. But once teachers, you know, have started to see some of the benefits by seeing, you know, increases in our, especially at Deer Park, our SC Ready ELA scores, you know, seeing that growth that they have, it's now laser-focused at Deer Park. You know, we're, we're dialed in, ready to go and ready to take that next step to move even further.
So thank you all so much, and I'll close with this. And it goes back to the question that you presented to Ms. Pilkey. Mr. Kelly, in reference to that, that graph and what scholars have represented it as it relates to the state assessment. And one of the things that we know is that when we see our scholars struggling, we provide interventions and supports, right? But one of the most important things we can do is remember that those kids still need to have access to, be exposed to, and be taught grade-level standards. Because intervention alone will not help our kids advance and, and have the skills they need to graduate and be successful. So we're committed to that, and that's what this PLC process supports. So thank you all again.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I, yes, I do. On the small group reteach, specifically, functionally, how does that happen? Are we pulling kids out of the general education class? Are we bringing in, like, has that happened?
So what happens is you have a decision between an actual modeling lesson or guided discourse. So guided discourse is when you may put two samples up on the board. One may be right and one may be incorrect. And you start asking scholars, not telling them the answers to, you tell me which one you agree with. That's probably the most That's probably the most, that's the method you use, you would use the most, but it's always whole class. So you're either going to do that method guided discourse, and I just wanted to explain that to you also, you understand it. Or you would do a whole group modeling, like a small reteach of the lesson. Does that make sense to you?
It, it does. I'm, I'm, the, the question is, is kind of aimed almost at the kids that, that do understand it. Are they, do you find them bored acting out, drawing?
Part of this process is we believe in collaborative conversations amongst scholars because they can learn from each other, right? So part of the process is that you need some of those scholars that can speak to it because then they help bring clarity to their other peers as relates to, here's where you probably missed what was taught and here's where your gap is.
Interesting. That's really cool.
And we also do that with the exemplars they spoke about. When we pick out those exemplars and those will be the pieces that you put up on the board. One would be an exemplar, one would be a scholar who maybe, may have been struggling. And you may want to put a third one up of a kid who was further off. And the exemplars come from looking at that, the scholar work and seeing who actually hit the target, who got it.
Yeah, it's like almost a classic education approach. I like that. On the, on the data-driven, what was the I?
Instruction.
Instruction, data-driven instruction. Is that happening in, across all subjects or is that explicitly ELA?
So it's hap, it should be happening across all subjects soon. What we're doing is we're starting this process. We just started, like I said, we had that cohort that went through for two years. And then we had our all schools training this past summer in this September. But like Ms. Raul said, you know, this is a really heavy lift for schools. And so what we're asking most schools to do right now is just unpack the standards with the no-show chart because that's something really different, as I explained earlier, from what we did with our TCTs. And that when you unpack that standard, you're asking yourself, what should scholars know? And what should they be able to show in order to show mastery of that standard? So that itself, if we can just get that part down, like maybe for the first semester, then we can start kind of like diving into some of the other pieces. We want to do it and do it well.
Thank you very much. Very wonderful. Well done.
Those in our audience today are getting a real feel for how complex teaching and learning is. I'm very excited about the professional learning communities. And I think we might do really well on that cognia standard that talks about action research because the action research is what you all are doing actually with your professional learning communities. And I know from my own doctoral work that engaging teachers in, in action research, which is also part of the professional learning community, that we were able to close the achievement gap. The 32 teachers that I worked with, with the projects that they had, they closed the gap, whether it was gender or whether it was some other demographics. So thank you for this hard work. It's meaningful work and let's just keep going because we're seeing results. Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yep, I jumped my question as far as the two principals coming up to speak, but I do have one more question. For the, I know we have the sixteen pilot and I know you did the all school training. What is the plan over the next five years of expansion throughout the rest of the district?
So like I said, I think it was the third or fourth slide when we talked about the future. Our goal is to create some whole schools, first of all, number one, so people can actually go see it happening because it is a heavy lift, like I said earlier, and seeing someone who's been doing it for quite some time, like Principal Raul and Principal Glaze have been doing it for quite some time. So they kind of have it now. Probably, you know, a lot more than the people who just went through this summer and in September. But we have the office hours with Ms. Royal that they're going to participate in October, November. And as needed, we can get more office hours with her, but also ask her to come back, which will cost. But she's so worth it and worth every penny. And I think everybody that's been to her training will shake their heads and say yes. So those are the two things. And one more thing is that we want to make sure that our new administrators just are trained period when they come in. And I've already spoken to Ms. Raul about that and what that can look like. So hopefully she's able to continue supporting us with that effort.
And Ms. Huggins, this is out of GOF right now or is this out of Esser?
It's a combination.
Yeah, it's a combination of both. So it wasn't Esser, but since we've kind of had that hold, Mrs. Simmons actually found a spot in her budget to pay for the training this year and we're really appreciative of that. So.
Thank you.
Ms. McKinney? Ms. Walton?
I, I primarily just have one question. I don't know if you want to answer this or Principal Rawls perhaps. But Principal Rawls mentioned that some of the teachers are hesitant and, but could you speak to that? What's, what is the hesitation?
Change, change is different and change is sometimes uncomfortable. And so I think the thing is, is until they're, they have an opportunity to really dive deep into the process at surface, it just looks like a lot, right? I will be very honest and transparent. The first two years, Michelle actually found out about this training and she and I started this effort together. We spent a year of learning about the planning and DDI pieces. And after every session, I would say, this is a really heavy lift. And so it wasn't until the second year, when we had her come in and do over the shoulder coaching, over the shoulder coaching, that we really understood what it meant to go through the processes and that made it a lot less overwhelming. And so I think that Ms. Raul alluded to the fact that it is a bit stressful for some, for some folks at first. But what she is seeing now is that as they sit through and they really see what can happen as a result of doing this and what the intentions are, they're, they're buying into it. Did I answer that, Ms. Raul, or do you want to come up?
I mean, yes, yes, he answered it.
We have lots of conversations about teaching and learning in our district, so.
If I can. We, at my last PLC, we made some really huge gains. And I had several teachers tell me like, I'm excited to come back to the next PLC now. But the work is, it's a lot because we're digging into standards in a different way than we have before. And so it's just a different way of thinking. That's where, like Dr. Williams said, the change, change is just difficult.
And we're chunking it. And like I said earlier, if we just get the no-show charts now from now until December, that's a win. That's a win. So we, we make sure now that teachers and schools understand that we, we can chunk this information and you don't have to do it all at once.
What are the percentage of teachers who have bought in versus those who have not yet?
I, I don't have an answer for you as it relates to that, but I haven't heard a lot about teachers who haven't bought in outside of what Ms. Raul just mentioned. So.
So this is district wide?
Yes, ma'am.
I had one more question, but I got so focused on what you were saying that. Yep.
When you think of it, you can get back to me. I promise I'll answer.
Thank you.
Ms. Waters?
Yes. First of all, Dr. Williams, just wanted to express gratitude for the work that you're doing. One of the things that I'm always thinking about are the schools that are sort of on the bubble. They're not quite acceleration schools, but they're not excellent schools either. And they have students who need on grade level instruction and, and so much other support. And so one, I just want to appreciate you and express gratitude to you and also the principals who, who presented. I do have just an overarching thought about just the three different presentations that were given around special education, around the, certainly the reading growth, the literacy progress in, in this one as well. And it's just that, you know, we have, our audience is getting the opportunity to hear just how hard our principals, our teachers, our staff is working. And on top of all of the work that they're doing, they're also sitting here in the audience, sitting in overflow rooms and showing up to be here, even when they can't speak or give input to what's happening. And so I just want to also just give gratitude to everybody who's in the room to hear this. As, as I also give you all gratitude, especially for the fact that you're organizing so much great work on behalf of students who don't necessarily get that targeted attention that comes through like the acceleration schools.
So I'll say that I know Ms. Huggins and Ms. Simmons are probably sick of me. Now, now they're not because I just begged and asked, can we please get this district wide, whatever it takes? Can we please make this work district wide? That's how much I believe in this. And I don't buy into a lot of things, but I truly believe in this work.
Ms. Robison?
Yeah. Just let me ditto trustee Waters. I have to say that in my nine months of serving, this has actually been the best agenda because we are actually talking about academics and student achievement and how we are working with our students. So thank you for this agenda. Dr. Williams, just an intentional question relating this back to the data from the earlier presentation. And you all know me, I am very passionate about my district. And so referencing the numbers that we looked at, the numbers, they're going up from 2021 to where we are now. I just want to, the PLCs, there's a social study PLC and a flagship school look the same as a title one school?
They should. Yes, ma'am. And, and that's, that's the purpose of all of the schools being trained. Same content, same instructor. It should look the same. And I know a lot of schools, I'll be honest, are probably work focusing on math and ELA right now. But I know some people are actually diving into the science and social studies as well because they want to get it down, you know, with those teachers, because when she does the training, she really does focus on the ELA math. But you can take this across all content. And one of the things we did by design for the last session that she came to is instead of doing it by grade level, like by middle, high elementary, we actually looked at feeder pattern, feeder patterns, because the process is the process. It doesn't matter about content. It doesn't matter about your content knowledge. As long as you know the steps and you do them well, you, you will see outcomes.
Okay. And that the support and the resources in the title one schools, are they the same?
As it relates to PLCs? Yes, ma'am. And I will say this, now that I'm thinking about it, we had some conversations and I know that Michelle took a visit to Greenville, I think it was. And so we were thinking about, how can we kind of like monitor this? Not to say I got you or you're, you're not doing it the right way, but to better support our schools. And so with that being said, we developed a form called the See It, Name It, Do It, which encompasses all of the pieces that you just learned about and the planning and DDI. And that's housed and school meant grow. And that's where we're going to ask schools to kind of put the steps that they're going through to really outline what they're doing for the planning and DDI pieces. So we can better support them in that way. So that's the way district wide, getting back to your question, that we're going to ensure that everybody is kind of where they need to be.
Okay. And those schools that you see may be lacking, then that's when you will offer them additional support.
Not when we just see it in school metro, but a part of our business is level leaders is we're going in and we're observing the PLC. So it may happen before they actually get through that entire process, but absolutely.
Okay. My concern is that sometimes they, sometimes you don't ask for help. And so when they, when you don't get that ask, do you just give?
Absolutely. A part of what I said earlier is we do what we call the CSR visits at the middle school level, coaching, supports and results. And we haven't been to Baptist Hill yet, but we're going for the middle school. And I know Dr. Appleshimer is doing it at the high school level as well. So.
Okay. Thank you. I'm a believer in PLC. My last school district, Prince William County in Northern Virginia. Big user of PLCs, very familiar with it. Thank you for the work and I look forward to the numbers increasing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wally, but might it be okay? Oh, Mrs. Bailey, I'm sorry.
Well, I was, I just have a question, but I also wanted to thank Ms. Anita and her staff for coordinating with me for strategic ed, for what we place on the strategic ed agenda. And I just wanted to ask, when you coordinate your PLCs, do you do it specifically through the different grade levels or is it all of the teachers, the teachers encompassed in those groups?
It's actually mostly done by content to have all the teachers in. That's, that's a bit cumbersome. So most schools do it with the like seventh grade math teachers. And what we're really working on and focusing on now are schools that have one teacher. How, how do we make that work for them? They can still participate in the process with their coaches and their principals, but we also want to find a way or find some ways to have some other teachers that they can coordinate with, sorry. But, but yeah, it's not, you know, all the teachers at one time in the building. It's about, you know, working with like content specific teachers at one time.
Okay. Cause what I wrote down was the, when you do the PLCs, the different perspectives of the standards. Because some, some, some people may not understand it fully and the others that do get it, they can help them to teach it to the children in a way that puts everybody's perspective in order.
That's why it's really important. We do it by content. And we actually learn that for our veteran teachers, it's helpful as well as it is for our novice teachers.
Mrs. Bailey, I just wanted to say before Dr. Williams goes back to his seat, I know this is going to embarrass him, but he and Ms. Simmons did champions work and as Ms. Simmons transitioned to help us on the academic side, Dr. Williams has really picked this up and made sure that it's systemic. And it is, those of you who know Dr. Williams and know him well, for 25 years, he's never changed. With everything he does, he does it with enthusiasm, integrity, dignity and respecting those around him. And so I really want to thank Joe publicly for his commitment to this work, for his persistence. And Anita, we need more, more funding and for his ability to bring everybody along with him because that's the testament of a true leader. So Joe, thank you for what you continue to do. We really all do appreciate you.
Across the district, boys all said and done, they're going to appreciate all the hard work that you, and the efforts that you guys have put into this. And this also is an informational piece, so there's no emotions. So I'll turn it back over to Ms. Watley.
Ms. Bailey, thank you very much. And I appreciate your show of humility as he is shaking his head. Dr. Williams is shaking his head, not wanting to be acknowledged. So we'll, we'll move on to item six, Audit and Finance Committee, which I will turn it over to Mr. Calhoun and Ms. Carlin.
All right. So I'm going to lead the Audit and Finance Committee report. I will encourage everyone, we're not going to do a very long report. We're going to hit the highlights of it, but then if you want to know more about a certain item, please go back and read the, go back and view the Audit and Finance Committee meeting from last Monday. And we will move forward with that action items that will be going over to the board. And Ms. Carlin, if you could just give a couple of sentences on what some of these are about. For the action item, the first one will be the eight percent general obligation bond. Each year we have to sell off, we have to sell the bonds or whatnot, and we have to do that before, was that October 31st?
So the payments are, well, the payments are due December 1st. Is that what you meant? The installment purchase revenue bonds? Yes.
Right, right, right. And this will be for not exceeding $95 million to fund two different projects that we have going for. Our next item that we have coming up will be the 2017 to 2022 capital programs phase for sales tech, sales tax technology replacements and upgrades budgets for reallocation. I know I've seen Mr. Merewaki online. Is he still there? There you go. So yeah, we have, can you speak really quickly regarding this, the sales tax, sales tax replacement?
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. So yeah, for further review, we're just reallocating money from two of our phase four projects into our infrastructure project to further our project overlay for the audio enhancement PA systems in schools.
All right. Any questions on that? All right, moving forward, we have our fixed cost of ownership FY24 budget reallocation. And I believe I saw Ms. Shaw online also.
This one's mine, sir.
Okay, so.
So this one is a reallocation of fixed cost of ownership FY24. We began the year with $200,000 in contingency with interest and we're now up to $800,000. We want to go ahead and move forward and reallocate some of those funds to allow for work to be done. That was either in the backlog or come in since the beginning of the school year. We've broken that up between facility maintenance, nutrition services, media center modernization, fine arts and furniture fixtures and equipment.
All right. Any questions? All right, moving forward, we have the, we just have fixed costs. We are on approval of contracts greater than $250,000. We have, you want to speak to that also, Mr. Roy?
Scraw, do you want to cover that when we do?
Yes, thank you. So we have approximately seven projects on this list totaling of $5 million that range from life cycle replacement on Chromebooks as well as other staff devices, some architectural and engineering services, teacher toolbox for iReady and then Eventworks, which covers our graduation and other event rentals for tables and stuff like that.
Any questions? Forward, our last one will be the monthly Head Start financial report. And I know I've seen Ms. Boxworth here. If you have any questions regarding that. Basically, we received a report that we as a board have to approve by, for the Head Start financial reports. It used to be quarterly. Now we are going to see this report monthly.
Every other month.
Every other month. Thank you. Want to speak to it?
Sure. Just briefly, as the governing body of the Head Start Grant, a regulation requires the review and approval of monthly financial statements with a detailed credit expenditures, the financial report and credit card statement. That you have this one includes July to August. And like Mr. Calhoun said, it was clarified to us. We thought we could do it quarterly, but the federal government says, no, no, you need to do it monthly. And so we, we feel like that every other month is a good cadence for us. It gives us some time to build up. It gives us some time to build up some credit card expenditures for you to review. And so we will be here every other month.
All right, any questions? Here and now, we will move on to the information items for the, from the audit and finance that will be moving forward. The first one being the 2023 to 2028 Capital Program Phase Five Sales Tax Early Out Project. There you go, damn it, Michelle.
This particular item was the informational item to inform the board that we are transferring $6.1 million of the $60 million spring ban that from 2022 to support the 14 projects that are listed on this item. Penny, any questions?
Any questions? All right, moving forward, the next one would be the monthly capital project support. Now, Ms. Carlin.
Actually, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Costello. She may not be.
There we go.
There we go, thank you.
You take her off mute.
Ms. Costello, can you hear us?
Sorry, I needed to unmute myself, I apologize to everyone. I'd like to present the August report, our sales tax collections for the month were $112,000 below the cash flow model projections based on the most recent collections with 2% growth over the prior year. Our expenditures for the 1016 Capital Program were $18,000. The expenditures for the 2017 through 2022 Capital Program were $1.2 million. The expenditures for the 2023 through 2028 Capital Program were $7.3 million. And the expenditures for the 2023 through 2028 long-term debt projects were $358,000. And our fixed cost of ownership fiscal year 24 program has commenced. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Any questions? Okay, moving forward, we will finally go to Ms. Carlin for the SR update.
Thank you, sir. So for SR one, we've expended all the, the allocation of 13.4 million for SR two. Through the end of August 31st, we have approximately $618,000 left over to be spent. And I can confirm that we spent all of that and we have filed the final claim for SR two funds. For SR three funds through the end of August, we have spent $854,000, $855,000 mostly, and excuse me, and incurred $26.3 million. And most of that encumbrance involves salaries and benefits. So remaining to be spent is approximately $56.8 million. And reimbursed to date is approximately $79.3 million.
Any questions? Right, and the last one I will take, because this is one I brought forward, is looking at the FOIA information that we're going to have more information going towards as well. I brought this for, because we were, over the last few weeks, we received a number of FOIA requests, but I wanted to understand where the funding came, went when we actually charged people for the FOIA request. As you can see on the information, as you can see on the attachment, we did not receive that much money for, for FOIA requests of last year. It was thought that we should put up a Florida policy, however, we think they should go towards the communications office to figure out their own internal policies of doing that, of how they collect funds for FOIA, for FOIA information. We also wanted to look at our legal fees for your, your to date, and as you can see, is about 1.4 million. And that was the conversation, looking at actually taking that money that we have for that 1.4, out of that 1.4 million and bringing in our own in-house counsel. So you can take a look at those as well, and we'll have more, more discussion at the board meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. We will move on to item numbers.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Calhoun, maybe it's, it was, maybe it's me. The membership to the Audit and Finance Committee, was that on this month or last month or?
That's a great question. So what we're doing, we are updating our charter. We had that discussion at our last, at the meeting of updating the charters, where we're going to move it towards being from, from saying at least six to at least six to if no more than nine. And so once we put for the, once we make our final edits to the charter, for, it is going to come to the board in November. So we have a four, basically a four-month process that we want to implement within our, the charter as well, to where in August we will review our charter. September, we will look at any, any type of reviews and bring for any type of change. October, we will bring it towards the, we will vote on it for the final review and send it to the board, so it can be implemented in November. So this month, we're, we're, that's basically like a month behind with this, so, because of other things that came up. So we'll be bringing it to the board November. Oh, we're going to make it work, always make it work. Yes, Ms. Roberson will be coming forward very soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for moving on to item number seven, policies. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelly and just remind you that we moved item B to eight C.
Yep, thank you for that. So seven eight was one that was brought forward by staff. It essentially defines how testing materials are secured in the school. The only other notable difference I think is worth pointing out is that it also allows for MP3 players and other type support devices to be used for students who are testing that are on an IEP that explicitly allows for that. Anything to add to that from the staff?
Mrs. Roberts, would you like to add anything to that? Writing that information, Mr. Kelly. And this is really just for the purpose of making sure we have a very clear test security policy and that we've defined that very well in this, in this document, so that, that's the reason for the update.
I only have one question, it's phenomenal, I cannot imagine having to manage this. My only question was, will we be, will the schools be sending out notices to the parents ahead of time to let them know that this day your child might not have their phone during this class, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Does everybody, will the parents get advance notice when this goes into effect?
Yes, ma'am, actually, nothing really changes as far as that goes. Families are informed of when testing occurs. So the only difference here is, you know, and I must say, this has always been in our testing manual, and this is really the protocol we follow. We've just outlined it here in writing, just documenting that process.
And just, just for clarity, Ms. McKinney, it's, it's permissive, not restrictive. The, the MP through the, yeah, okay. So there should be, is there a motion on the floor for this action?
Move to advance.
Policy to the regular board meeting.
Any questions or discussion? Call for the question, please. Okay, motion carries unanimous, so I can go to, oh, wait. Yep, I'm sorry, I can see, so I can go to consent. Ms. Waters?
Watley?
That too, sorry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly, we will now move on to item eight, other business. Item A is the constituent board pay, this was brought forward, actually, I'll, Ms. McKinney is the one that wanted to place this on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and if you want to present this, I'll go ahead.
I would like to move to advance to the October 23, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting for consideration to have Audit and Finance at the item for discussion for the 2425 budget of increasing the per-meeting pay for constituent board members.
I'll second it.
I have a question. So I know they get paid per meeting, but I also know that some constituent boards meetings go way longer than others, just because they have so many. You, you listen to us too, right? West Ashley and, and our D4 area. And so I'm also wondering if there can be, and this is an advocacy that came from our constituent board members, so I'm also not asking for me, but asking for them, if we would consider even an hourly rate, it's particularly beyond a certain point in time, because some of these folks actually give a lot more of their time than other constituent boards have to.
And, and it's my understanding that that has to be a legislative decision, because the way they've got it set up now, it's per-meeting. So it would have to be a change by the legislature.
If I may.
Can I finish? Because this.
I was going to actually ask Mr. Barrow to chime in.
Ken, the question I would have about the legislature, the legislative piece is, given that this doesn't directly impact them, would our, I mean, have you had any conversations about it? Because I'm thinking our word would go really far in the conversation, given that it's not really their jurisdiction.
Well, when I asked about the ability for us to increase it, I was told it had to be a three-part process.
Oh, no, I get that, but I mean, have you checked the temperature to see if a recommendation from us is going to go, you know, far?
No, ma'am, I have not.
Just wondering if there's more we can do, if we could send a letter of advocacy or, you know.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah, obviously, everyone know I'm very intimately involved with this. And once we get it to the Audit and Finance Committee, I want to see what we can do to actually push it forward. Yeah, the $20 per meeting was not fun. We, we met, I mean, Ms. Sins is up in there with me, we were meeting for five to ten, five to six hours, one time until one o'clock in the morning. And the $20 a meeting was, it's just not going to cut it anymore. And if you look at it, this law has not been changed since the 1970s. 1970s. So it is time to push forward for our constituent boards, if we're going to have them, we need to make it equitable throughout. So yes, we definitely need to be pushing this forward to October 23rd meeting and follow through any step we can do to get our constituent boards, some type of the other elected officials, elected officials to pay that they deserve.
And also, I want to ask.
Hold on, I was going to call on Dr. Temple.
Oh, okay, well, we can go anywhere if you want.
Okay, however you want to do it.
Well, I just, as a former constituent board person as well, I think this is really good to take a look at, at this. And, and also, as Audit and Finance looks at it, not only do some of the constituent boards meet for a longer period of time because of the caseload, but the frequency of the number of meetings is also great. And I would like for Audit and Finance, I understand with the budget that we pass this time that we do have constituent boards that are, are meeting for extended periods of time. They start, you know, five o'clock or so and they're going. So, you know, we need to be able to provide them with a light supper or snacks because they can't, you know, get away. And the other consequence too is that we rely so heavily on the technology for our agenda items. And many of these constituent board members don't even, out of their stipend, it's not even enough money for them to get a computer. So when Audit and Finance looks at it, maybe they could look at the whole picture of making sure that the constituent board members have the technology they need for to do their meetings and, and a little snack at least.
Ms. Roberson?
I actually was going to say exactly what Dr. Temple said, so I'm not, I wouldn't waste any time, but just diddle to everything Dr. Temple said.
Ms. Bailey?
About the, the resources and the tools that they need to accomplish their job. I mean, do they have money in the budget to buy laptops or computers or anything like that to where they're able to successfully accomplish their jobs during the times that they have during these meetings?
Mr. Kelly?
This one gives me pause. Because we are working hard to get teachers to pay they need. I do understand the, the time and dedication that it takes to do any board, this one included all of them. And I'm sure all of us could understand that, I, I mean, if it were to be an hourly wage, we're way under minimum wage, the number of hours we put in. I, it gives me pause. I, I don't like pursuing a raise for elected folks when our teachers are still not funded correctly.
Mr. Calhoun, I'll come back to you now.
Yeah, I would say one be a raise will actually bring equity to where they've been since 1973. However, also will say, as far as the resources, no, they don't have it inside the budget, because it's coming out of communications budget, so they don't have the money outside of the budget. And right before I left, that's what we just, I believe we just got the iPads for each constituent board member. But again, those are brought in during the actual meeting and then taken back before, so it's not like we can use that to be able to prepare prior to, same thing what we do with our computers, if we don't take those home with us. So, yeah, they, we just got the iPad, which made it a little bit more efficient. We are, there are more Zoom meetings, particularly if you think about V10, basically meeting once a week for $20 a week. And that's not even enough to get you to guess to West Ashley Center for Academic Success. So.
With my time, Mr. Barrow, when we were putting this on the agenda, you started to say something, but weren't able to complete your thought. Is that something you would like to speak to now, or you want us to run it the chain first?
No, ma'am, I'd rather wait until it's wrapped the chain.
All right. With that, Mr. Kelly, I'm sorry, we're on eight A. So we have a, Ms. McKinney, you've made a motion, so do we have a second?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Calhoun?
Courtney already seconded.
Oh, you, you already seconded, okay, we'll call for the question then. Sorry, I got lost in the conversation. The, the motion carries. If it's okay with Ms. Roberson, moving items seven B that we had placed as eight C to eight B. This is a motion to advance to the October 2023, October 23rd, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting to consider the Rotary Youth Exchanges request to allow two foreign exchange students to enroll at Lucy Beckham High School for the entire 2024 school year. Historically, Ms. Huggins, did, was somebody in particular going to present this? Historically, Lucy Beckham doesn't generally have room for exchange students, so.
I'm happy to, Ms. Brightheart had to leave, and so Anna Dasing, the principal at Lucy Beckham is here. I think the board normally considers these items an executive session, but upon review, we felt like it could easily be done in open session. Typically, the policy allows, it was originally under policy for exchange to occur when there's space in a school. In, in many instances, it's not an actual exchange. And so in conversation with Anna Dasing, the principal of Lucy Beckham High School, who I still see back here, this would be an even exchange of foreign exchange students and Lucy Beckham students, so it would not result in an increased enrollment in the school. And so Mrs. Dasing is in full support of the exchange. And your preliminary approval tonight would allow the, the Rotary Club to bring forward and for final approval to the board in the spring, renewing to.
For final approval to the board in the spring, renewing to individual students' application for an actual exchange abroad. Mrs. Dasing, do you have anything you'd like to add? She said no. Do, if you have questions, we're happy to answer them, Dr. Temple. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wobbe.
Yeah, so um, before we begin discussion, can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
So I made the motion and Dr. Temple seconded. Mr. Trudy, you got everything? Okay, um, Dr. Temple, I'll open discussion with you.
I just have a question, would this um action not apply to other schools that might have the exchange? Not just um Lucy Beckham, I mean, cause we get, we get other schools that um are interested in this?
Really, really good question, Dr. Temple, it absolutely would. We typically don't, we typically don't seek your approval, however, until we receive the actual request. And we've received this request for quite some time now, so we went ahead and put it on the agenda. But you're, you're right, when we receive an actual request for placement, we then place it on the agenda.
All right, and then um, I also have received a request from someone really wondering what the process is for exchange students. Do we have, do we have a a process for how people can approach this? If, I mean, some, some people in the community are interested in having exchange students in their home. Whether or not their student would go somewhere else or not. So do we have it defined where this happens or how it happens?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that question too. It's actually outlined in one of our policies, how this exchange occurs. And Oscar Douglas here works with Sharon Brightheart, yes, you do, Mr. Douglas, on this matter. And so the policy um outlines, Dr. Temple, that the process starts and has to be approved by the board. And so those requests are filtered to Sharon Brightheart and our general counsel office. And if it, and any request you get, if you'd like to forward them to our attention, we'll be happy to make sure they're appropriately routed, Dr. Temple, thank you.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Bailey. Mr. Callum. Ms. McKenna. Ms. Waters.
I may have a question, but I'm a little bit.
Okay, sure.
If you can clarify.
Okay, um, I have. This brings pause to me for a couple of reasons. One, I'm not sure why it was originally put under policy unless we were trying to um suspend the policy. Or I'm I'm not sure why it was put on policy. Secondly, it sounds like you're trying to do an even swap to go and to come in. But we don't have our numbers yet, so we don't know what the numbers are gonna look like for next year at Lucy Beckham. So how could we now in this year do, know that we could do an even swap? We don't know the projections for new students coming into that area. And what if we need the seats? So I, what I don't want to do is to start something um now for one school. And then we we are setting precedence that we are not waiting. And I guess my last um statement is, why is there, it's not until next year? What's the um, the urgency?
Three really good points, questions. I think the original rationale for putting it under the policy, um, Mrs. Roberson, is because these items, this item. Is related directly to a policy, but I acknowledge that it was probably misplaced. So that's one. Two, really, really good point um about not knowing projections for next year and the request is for next year. The student requests that have been made are for current students zoned for that school. So we know that the two students and Mrs. Dasing, correct me if I'm wrong. We know that the two students that have been requested to exchange or travel are currently upperclassmen at Lucy Beckham. And so it would not result in an increase in student enrollment in that school. Because they're currently placed in the school and zoned for there, unless they were to move out of district, which always could occur. But it's a really good question, does that answer make sense? They're they're currently in the school, so they're zoned for the school. So they already have two seats in the school, and so they'll travel abroad, so it won't, it won't result in an increased enrollment.
So right, so two are leaving and then two wants to come in.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, but what I'm saying is, what if we have two CCSD students here? That wants the seat there, we don't know our numbers for next year. So we, you're, you're presenting an even swap with the two foreign exchange students, with two students that's going there. But what if their family is just moving in Lucy Beckham's area that's regular CCSD students? How do we know that we don't need those two seats for the students that's leaving for those two CCSD students?
Great point, great, wonderful question. We are obliged to offer seats to any student that moves into that zone anyway. So the only time it would impact two CCS students would be if they were out of district or out of district two. Does that make sense? Like they're in the waiting list. It does. To get into. I see where, I see where you're going, I I I see your question, um, and it, your points, your points were taken. The, the third question or point you made. The youth exchange program, because this is such an extensive process, we've asked the exact same thing of Mr. Mello several times about putting this on the agenda. Their process starts months in advance to arrange this transfer. And so before they can move forward with any next steps to arrange all of the detail, and Miss Dasing may be able to speak more intricately to this than I can. They needed to know promptly. They've been in discussion with us for several months about this, to be honest. Um, Mrs. Brightheart had to step away, but she's been very patient in in the exchanges with them and the parents.
So what happens if we commit two seats to foreign exchange students that we may need? Yeah, I just feel uneasy about starting something like this. Because now we are opening ourselves up to do this. And then secondly, is this the first time that this has come up?
A true exchange, uh, this is the first time a true exchange like this has come up for Lucy Beckham. And uh, the reason again that we're bringing it forward is because in executive session, the request for Lucy Beckham in regards to exchange placements are normally denied. Because of your, the exact point that you're, you made in question number two, which is there's not space in the school. But the reason the principal and associate brought, allowed this to come forward is because it's an actual even swap. But again, point, point well taken. Ms. Waters. Miss Dasing, would, is there anything else, Miss Dasing, you wanna add? Thank you, Ms. Dasing, and thank you for the thoughtful questions, Mrs. Roberson.
Thank you, we just think it's really important to provide the opportunities that a diverse group of students coming in. We just think it's a, it's a benefit to both the students that are coming in, but also to our entire student body. For experiencing different cultures, different backgrounds, that kind of things, we we see it as a win-win.
So I I will just take my time to ask. Typically, because you, Lucy Beckham is always at capacity, we don't have the opportunity to allow um for foreign exchange. So your point is this will actually give Lucy Beckham that opportunity?
Yes.
Um, anything else, Mr. Callum?
Yeah, I just wanna um bring clarity to it as well. When we have our four, our students go out on a foreign exchange program, that our numbers don't drop. It's like they still have those two slots and they're still under our um, under our school number, correct?
They. That's, that's great, Mr. Callum, that's correct. So what typically happens, I believe, I, again, in the executive session is you consider exchange request. And most of the time, they're not for an even exchange, they're just for a student to travel abroad here, which adds to the numbers. So typically, in full transparency for the public, those requests are denied because Lucy Beckham is overcapacity. So that your, your statement is 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 spot on, this would not add to.
Right, what I'm saying, when we say we didn't even have the exchanges coming in, they would still be counted within our numbers. But they're just off abroad doing their studies. So when we do the the hundred day counter, so when that, they're still counted within our, and within those numbers as uh, with that, even without them coming in, they will still be counted within those numbers.
Exactly, yes, sir, yes, sir. You explained that a lot better than I I did, thank you.
Um, Mr. Kelly.
So I I just wanna, I I had the same concern um as uh, as Ms. Roberson. And and the the this, the squaring of it in my mind was I put myself in the boardroom of wherever our students will be, will be going. And I think the value to the students that we are sending out is is of such value. I think to the point of of culture that that accepting the other students. It, the the benefit is outweighed, the downside of of crowding is outweighed by the benefit to our local students. So that was kind of my thought process, but I had the same uh, uh, thought as Ms. Roberson about the the capacity.
Now, I'd just like to say to our community, I I'm glad that the Rotary uh group is interested in helping with youth exchange. And I would hope that there would be other organizations within our community that would support youth exchange. Cause I think, I think this is very beneficial to all of our high schools, so we just need more sponsors. So this is the call, if you're out there, um, think about how you might sponsor a couple of students.
Okay, it's good. Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am, we'll go ahead and call for the question. And this question I enthusiastically support. All righty, and the motion passes. Our final um item in section eight is consent items, uh, potential consent items. I believe it is five A and seven A. Ms. Trudy, can you verify that? All right. Uh, the constituent board pay, no, there was one abstention.
That's what I was gonna ask, with the abstention, um, with the stitching count towards a no, or is that just? Excludes it, so it, so that makes it seven oh.
Then that would move it to six oh. No, sorry, you're right, it is seven oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. To to move the consent items or the the items for potential consent to the um board meeting on October twenty third. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, Ms. Bailey. Um, before we go to item nine A, there's um, Ms. Huggins, there's some question about the accuracy of the November dates.
Yes, ma'am, it looks like November sixth is the committee of the whole due to the holiday. And November thirteenth would be the next regularly scheduled board meeting, again, due to the holiday.
Sure, can you verify that and make sure that's?
I'm happy, I'm happy to.
Okay.
It is on our calendar, but I'll I'll verify it just to confirm.
So then I'm just gonna publicly announce that our next upcoming meeting is going to be the regular board meeting on October the twenty third at five fifteen.
Ms. Wobbe.
Yes, ma'am.
That's not, that's not correct, we have one now um that.
Oh, that's right, thank you for that.
But I have a, but I have questions about it, we, I know we don't typically discuss, but I do have some questions. The, one, my curiosity is why the meeting was scheduled so hastily without many of us being informed about the meeting? Because we do have jobs and prior commitments.
Right, um, it felt, we felt it was expedient to respond to the Attorney General and to the government. And I could, I tried, I could not get it a twenty-four hour notice out any earlier than one thirty. I was trying to get it out during a lunch break so that it would be possibly the least. Interrupted for people's schedules, and so one thirty was as soon as I could get it, get a twenty-four notice, twenty-four hour notice. Out to respond to the governor and the attorney general.
Sure, but the call was for transparency, which means that the board members who were all involved need to be there so we can have the conversation.
They were not consulted for the time, I just asked if they would sign them to the agenda items.
Well, that's not, no, I mean, I'm not concerned about who else, no, no, my my concern is in general for, we should all be consulted when we're going to have a meeting. Cause it's important for us to be here to speak on behalf of our constituency. And tomorrow at one thirty, I mean, my, that, that appointment for me has been set for weeks and it's very difficult to move. I'm going to make every attempt to move it, but it is really, really inconvenient when we do have day jobs and we give so much time to this. Also, I realize we need to respond to the governor, but the action was already taken. If we're just coming in to redo it, it's, it's actually not that urgent because it's already, it's already happening. So I'm just wondering why it must be tomorrow, why it couldn't potentially be later in the week after you've had an opportunity to figure out when people are available.
I don't know how to answer that except um, to me, the governor and the attorney general are urgent.
Well, they are urgent, oh, can I?
Sure, yes, go ahead, Ms. Roberson.
I agree that they are urgent, but I also agree that we are important as well. And whenever, we are part of this board. And so any meeting should be discussed with us because we do have calendars. Um, and because this is not an urgency, it's another mulligan. I ask that since we are all here, that we come up with a time that's agreeable with all of us. No one asked if we had previously scheduled appointments. And I don't believe that the Attorney General and the governor controls our personal schedule.
Yes, ma'am. I, just so you know, it's not a mulligan, I also strongly objected, but I, um, it was sprung on me as well. But I have gone ahead, um, because the notice went out, I went ahead and I actually did have to move already scheduled appointments. But um, it's, it's, anyway.
Yeah, I, I'm about to say. I just found this out just now when I looked.
So all of us are just now finding out?
Yeah, so I think that's the irritation of it, is that we.
But I just wanted everybody to know that you aren't the only one. There's public perception that.
And that's great what the public thinks, I'm, what I'm saying is that my calendar is not easily movable this way. We could have had a call this morning and just said, hey, we looking at trying to do a meeting tomorrow.
Well, it's not.
May, maybe I should ask counsel for advice.
So, so let's be clear about what advice are you requesting? Because the scheduling of the meeting was, was not quote unquote outside the law or illegal. The question seems to be the timing of it and the fact that it was scheduled with little consultation, if you will. So it's not, it's not really a legal issue at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair, fair enough. Um, I will say that when we have special called meetings, I don't call eight people and check on the time.
I will say that when we have special called meetings, I don't call eight people and check on the time. Because the policy says the board chair.
Maintain order, please.
Because the policy says the board chair is supposed to call the special meeting, or a majority of the board members may. It doesn't say with consultation, but I will make a commitment going forward to check with everyone. But you have to be willing to return my phone call.
Let's maintain order, please. Okay, Mr. Doctor.
I assume that the Zoom capability is set up for tomorrow at one thirty.
Mrs. Bowles indicated that communications will take care of that.
Right. And I would suspect with just two agenda items and like Ms., I think it was Ms. Waters or Ms. Roberson said, they've already been addressed, we're just readdressing them. There would not be a lengthy discussion. So I would hope not to infringe on people's days. I had to change my whole day as well.
I would just like to say that there are programs that allow you to put out when possibilities are for a meeting and that we could be polled and have at least twenty-four hours to do it. I mean, assuming that we were, I was here paying attention to the meeting. I wasn't reading my email to know about a meeting for tomorrow. And it's, it's very inconvenient for me tomorrow.
It's very inconvenient.
So I think that unless it's an emergency, we, you need to put out a, I'm sure staff knows how to put out a doodle and figure out when all of us can meet because people do have jobs and they have work. So one thirty is just not a good, good time. And I have an appointment tomorrow that I would find difficult to change and, and reschedule.
Mr. Kelly? Ms. Bailey?
I just want to make one more comment.
Go ahead.
Difficult to reschedule is, is very different for some people than it is for others. Some of us, again, have jobs and we're not just beholden to what we want to do. There are other folks counting on us expecting us. We're not just going to lunch with friends or anything like that. We have real commitments. Some of us, money is on the line. Now I'm speaking for other people, but I'm just saying we need to be consulted about meeting times, period. And I, and, and I have served under another chair who did pick up the phone and call people because that's actually what you do when you're the chair. You do call. And you're right, if we don't respond, then that's shame on us. But it's, however, I don't believe we've ever not responded to a meeting request. I'll speak for myself personally. I will always respond to a meeting request because my, my calendar is already set a month out. So twenty-four hours is definitely not enough. If I have to make adjustments, at least a couple of days so I can see if someone else can cover. It's just higher stakes for some than others.
So it is parliamentarian and legal counsel concurs that we can change the time. So I will send, do we, so is it, it's not on the agenda, so I don't want to ask now. I don't want to get in trouble for something not being on the agenda. So is the proper procedure to send a cancellation of this meeting? And I will send, I will check with the district for Zoom support and abilities and check with trustees for a time.
Right. And you can suggest, and let's get through it, by the way, I would suggest doing a doodle poll because that really would be the easiest way for everybody.
If we have that capability.
I do, for sure.
Okay, excuse me. Thank you. So with that, we will go ahead and move on to the adjournment of the meeting. We don't need a second for that, right?